In two minutes, thirty seconds. Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, on one nation, on one God, equal and equal all, with the love and devotion of God and the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit.
Roll call. Councilmember Castle.
Present.
Councilmember Jiminy Dean. Deputy Mayor Katz.
Here.
Councilmember Pruitt.
Yeah.
Councilmember Schwartz.
Here.
Councilmember Sun.
Here.
Mayor Parker.
Here.
Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by Resolution 274-2014, setting the 2015 meeting dates, Resolution Number 103-2015 amending the 2015 meeting dates, sending a copy to the newspapers officially designated for 2015 by way of Resolution Number 275-2014, file a copy in the township clerk's office, posting it on the municipal building bulletin board, and the mayor hereby directs that this statement be included in the minutes.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to tonight's meeting. For the record, we also have present with us Mr. William Broughton, our township manager, Jamie Avellina, the township clerk, Issa Abassi, the executive assistant, and from the law firm of Winnie Danta, we have with us Stanley Turrets and also Lori Johnson. And if Stan could just introduce Lori to us. And we are delighted to have her welcome, Lori. The next televised council meeting will take place on Tuesday, July 14, 2015, with legal opening to begin at 7:00 PM and public input to begin at 8:00 PM. The Independence Day Parade will be held on Saturday, July 4th, beginning at 9:30 AM. The parade runs along Queen Anne Road, beginning at Queens Court and ends at OT Park. Residents are invited to join in the annual community celebration at OT Park and at the conclusion of the parade. Administrative offices will be closed on Friday, July 3rd, in observance of Independence Day. Registration for summer township-wide garden sale is now open. Residents may register by visiting our website, www.tenecknj.gov/residents, and completing the form or by contacting Issa Abassi, our executive assistant, at (201) 837-1600, extension 1003, or by email. Council met in closed session to discuss the following items: interviews for planning board, interviews -- well, actually, we didn't discuss those, strike those things, we didn't discuss them, township managers evaluation, township clerks evaluation, personnel, contract negotiations, legal issues regarding Green Acres parking lot with PSENG, billboards, and Teaneck Road overlay zone. Before I begin with presentations, I would just like to ask if we could stand for a moment of silence in honor of the nine lives that were lost last week in South Carolina. Thank you. Please be seated. We have lots of presentations scheduled for this evening. And we will begin -- is there someone from the Ziyet family here?
Madam Mayor, could I read you the Resolution Q that we've decided in closed session?
Yes.
Okay. There'll be a Resolution added, Resolution Q, subject to the approval of the county prosecutor and further action of the township council. The following persons are hereby appointed as orphaned prosecutors at a cost of $250 per AM session and $250 per PM session, set total cost not to exceed 10 total sessions or $2,500 over a 12-month period, further subject to set appointees meeting or required pay-to-play requirements of the township. Ari Weisbrot, Kimberly Parsons, and Linda Swiger. We're required to have orphaned prosecutors, and these are being appointed on a first day of August.
So Resolution Q will be added to the consent agenda, and if any resident would like to speak about that, they can do so during Good and Welfare. So there's not a representative from the Ziyet family, so we'll hold that. Okay, we'll hold that. And we will now have a presentation to our Yav Senior and our chairperson of the Youth Advisory Board, Tristan Anderson. If you could just join me. So at our last council meeting, we honored our Yav Seniors who will be leaving us next year and going away to college, but Tristan was not able to join us because he was receiving a scholarship or an award, I believe, at Glen Point. But Tristan, we just wanted to thank you for your years of service to the township. We thank you for serving as chair over this last year. You've been a pleasure to work with, and what I always encourage the students when they go off and do great things is never forget home. But knowing your mom, I know that you won't forget home, and you'll always remember Teaneck. But remember to always give back to your community, and remember that we are here for you, also to support you and your future efforts. What will you be doing next year?
I'll be attending BCC under the NJ Stars program, where I'll be pursuing a career in dermatology.
So on behalf of the township council, we'd like to extend heartfelt congratulations to Tristan Anderson and recognition of your membership on the Teaneck Youth Advisory Board. We wish you the best of luck in college and all your future endeavors. Congratulations.
Okay, good evening, everyone. This evening, it's my pleasure to promote several of our DPW workers. These are people in the community that actually get it done for us. They have a very, very significant impact on the quality of life in Teaneck, and these promotions are well-deserved, and we want you guys to know that we appreciate everything you do, and we know that you work very hard. I don't know if you've had the opportunity to look outside of the new building today, but it was our DPW staff that designed the entire landscape and that installed all the plants, so I think it's come out beautiful, so. I have with me Fran Wilson, Director of DPW, and we also -- Mike, come on up with us. Mike's supervisor, Mike Cassidy, he's the tree supervisor. So the first person we have is Christopher Hoyle. Would you come up? Christopher is being promoted this evening to mechanic. He has served in the Department of Public Works for two years, starting in 2013. Christopher Carley serves as mechanics helper. He graduated Lincoln Tech in 2012. Christopher is a veteran of the Navy and served in Operation Iraqi Freedom. He is also certified in STEMCO SEAL in brakes. Christopher's girlfriend Katie Denholland is in attendance here this evening, so congratulations. Next, we have Peter Fednick. Yeah, I'm not gonna say -- I can't say that. Peter! Peter is being promoted this evening to mechanic. He has served in the Department of Public Works for two years, starting in 2013. He currently serves as mechanic help, mechanics helper. He's a veteran, having served in the US Army, where he also graduated from School of Heavy Equipment Repair and Service. He is also certified in STEMCO in brakes. He's married for 24 years and has two children, a son aged 22 and a daughter aged 17. Congratulations, Peter. Next, we have Michael Henick. Michael Henick. Michael Henick is being promoted this evening to mechanic. He has served in the Department of Works for 10 years, starting in 2005. He currently serves as mechanics helper and previously held the position of laborer. Michael is one of the main employees who runs the DPW's biodiesel program. So we have a biodiesel program where they, where these guys actually get used vegetable oil and oil, and they make biodiesel to go in the trucks, and it saves Teaneck significant money on fuel. So if you smell french fries coming to your neighborhood, it's biodiesel. Okay? Michael is also one of the main employees who began the DPW's winter brine program. This is the process where salt and water are mixed together to an approximate saturation level of about 23.5%. So when you see the trucks in the winter coming out, putting the brine on the road, this is saving us significantly on amount of salt that's needed to clear the roads or deice the roads. He is also a certified in air conditioning, drive shaft, and hydraulic, so congratulations, Michael. Riston Harris. Riston Harris is being promoted this evening to truck driver. He has served in the Department of Public Works for eight years, starting for eight years. Riston currently serves as a laborer. In his tenure with the DPW, Riston has obtained a CDL license, worked in the roads division, filling potholes, cutouts, and working on unimproved roads. Riston has also worked in the sign division and filled in driving the recyclable and garden debris route, so thank you. Patrick McLaren. A little clap for Patrick. Patrick is being promoted this evening to heavy truck driver. He has served in the Department of Works for nine years, starting in 2006. Patrick currently serves as truck driver and previously held the position of laborer. Patrick obtained a CDL in 2000. He's worked at the DPW yard for four years and the roads division for four years and performs pothole repairs. Patrick also filled in by driving a compacted truck to perform recycling garden debris pickup. Thank you, Patrick. Congratulations. Brian Kissler. Brian is being promoted this evening to truck driver. He has served in the Department of Public Works for 11 years, starting in 2004. Brian currently serves as a laborer. He is a certified line clearance arborist for the township. He also serves as a volunteer firefighter in Bud Lake and is certified in first aid and CPR. Brian is a member of Our Savior Lutheran Church. Congratulations. Lester Autry. Lester is being promoted this evening to heavy truck driver. He has served in the Department of Works for four years, starting in 2010. Lester currently serves as a truck driver and previously held the position of laborer. Lester is happily married to his lovely wife Angela for 35 years. They have four children, three boys and one girl. He is also a proud grandfather of eight grandchildren. Wow! Lester is a certified line clearance arborist for the Township Tree Division. A few years ago, Lester recovered a historical plaque on the front lawn of the Municipal Green while grinding a stump. Lester serves as an elder and is a food pantry co-leader for the community Seventh-day Baptist Adventist, Seventh-day Adventist Church of Inglewood. Congratulations. Jeff Delvecchio. Jeff is being promoted this evening to supervising mechanic. He has served in the Department of Public Works for 13 years, starting in 2002. Jeff currently serves as an assistant supervisor, previously held the position of mechanic. Jeff is married to his wife Brooke for 14 years. Together, they have three sons, Anthony 11, Benjamin 8, and Christopher 6. Jeff serves on the garbage and recycling committee in New Milford and is also on the green team. Congratulations, Jeff. Justin Perrelli. Justin is being promoted this evening to supervisor of Public Works. He has served in the Department of Public Works for 17 years, starting in 198, 1998. Justin currently serves as assistant supervisor for Public Works and previously held the position of senior maintenance repair, maintenance repair and laborer. Justin obtained a CDL Class B and tanker endorsement during his tenure with DPW. He is also a master carpenter. You see the welcome desks out there in the front? Justin made that. That's the, that's the kind of work he does. Excellent work. He recently, in 2005, he helped renovate the offices at the DPW. Justin also worked on major renovations in Town Hall, including converting the greeting area to a staff kitchen and building the senior greeter desk. Justin enjoys spending time with his son and has a love for fishing, which finds him entering tournaments throughout the Northeast region. Congratulations, Justin. And he's also got a heck of a handshake, but we, we know how to deal with that now. We know what to do with him, so he can't crush us. Trevon Romeo. Trevon is being promoted this evening to supervisor of Public Works. He has served in the Department of Public Works for 12 years, starting in 2003. Trevon currently holds the position of assistant supervisor for mechanics. His daughter Anye, that somewhere right, is in attendance this evening. He previously held positions including mechanic, assistant supervisor of Public Works in the sewer division, and holds a C1 and C2 sewer license. Trevon did a remarkable job in 2014, converting a 2001 Chevy Suburban and Old Fire vehicle into the first-ever sewer vehicle inspection unit that helped the township save thousands of dollars by doing so. Congratulations, Trevon. Fran, is there anything you'd like to say?
Yeah, if I could. Thank you. First off, I'd like to thank the manager for having these promotions. These 10 individuals that you see in front of us today are a very important part of Public Works. They all, they all bring something different to the table, and they're all part of a, of a team down there that at, at all different times of the year, when everyone could be home sleeping, they're out working during the snow and stuff like that. I'll group them a little bit together, the three mechanics, the first three gentlemen here, and the supervisor down there, Jeff. We had a transformation over the last couple of years in the garage division where we've lost a significant number of individuals. We replaced them with two new guys, Chris and Pete. Mike was, has been in there for a while. We also just recently hired two other individuals, and they are, they have turned the garage division around immensely. The turnaround on the repairs of the equipment, it's not that new equipment, so, I mean, during the wintertime when stuff breaks down and we need it, they get the stuff right back up, so I, a big thank you to you guys for the hard work that you guys do. I know I might be a little biased because I started my career in there, so I know the work is not, is extremely difficult, and I, I thank you. To Riston and Patrick, who's next in line there, they are well-rounded employees in the roads division. They can fill in anywhere at any time. Their main chore of late has been their pothole repair, and it's like a never-ending job, as we all know, but they do an outstanding job. Next in line is Brian and Lester. Those two individuals are, were the ones that were involved in the planting of the, of the shrubbery around Town Hall and the 4,000 plants that were on the Teaneck roadside. Yes, they were on their hands and knees, I guess, for two and a half days doing that, but overall, they, for the most part, they're in the tree division, and along with their supervisor, Mike, and two other tree climbers, they have turned that, that division around to where the complaints are minimal compared to what it was six, seven years ago. Next, Justin Perrelli. He's our, now our maintenance supervisor. Everywhere you go, every building that you go in, you will see work that's done by Justin. He's an outstanding carpenter. He's got outstanding leadership abilities. He's got a good crew that works with him, and they have a large, vast majority of work that they do on a daily basis. And last, Trevon. He took over the sewer division a few years ago, when our former supervisor passed away. And the difference between 2015 and 2010 is night and day. We have a video camera that we go out, we inspect, we, we video thousands of feet on a monthly basis. He's very progressive as far as the, the work that needs to be done in the sewer division, whether it's videoing, sewer jetting, catch basin cleaning, and he, he does that with a crew of maybe three guys, maybe four at best. And all you guys have done an outstanding job, I mentioned that, all you guys have done an outstanding job, and I'm glad to have you as part of the team. And congratulations on your promotion.
Mr. Manager. Unfortunately, the DPW is probably one of the least recognized departments in our, amongst our departments, but the reality is they're probably one of the most important departments. They're the backbone of our operation. Our police department, our police cars wouldn't run if it wasn't for our DPW, our fire trucks wouldn't run if it wasn't for the DPW, the lawns wouldn't be cut, the buildings wouldn't be cleaned, our signs wouldn't be up, and the list goes on and on and on. You did an awesome job this winter. I don't want to say the four-letter S-word in June, but this was a brutal winter, and Teaneck still shined. And, I mean, Mike Henick, you come from a family of volunteers and people that love Teaneck and give to Teaneck, and how much you're dedicated to Teaneck and to your job, but I'm, I'm very proud of the work that you do. We don't say it often enough, but tonight, I guess, is a good opportunity to really say thank you very much for everything.
You know, quality of life is a very important issue, anywhere, and I don't think that any other town has the positive quality of life that we do because of these gentlemen. I think they're the backbone of what makes Teaneck a fine town, and I really congratulate them.
Any other council members? I would just like to congratulate you on behalf of all the residents of Teaneck. As the deputy mayor indicated, you guys are the backbone of our operation here, and every amenity in the street is credited to you, so I just want to thank you guys for all that you do. I've seen many of you move up through the ranks, and I'm very proud of you and just continue to do good work for the residents of Teaneck. And I just, I can't say enough about Fran. I don't remember how many years ago when we separated the department and Fran became the Department of Public Works Director. That was one of the best decisions, best recommendations that our manager made, because it really took the department to another level, so I thank you for your leadership over there as well.
And just to wrap it up, I want to, I want to congratulate all of you. You guys do an excellent job. I see you guys out there, I know what you're doing, and I appreciate it. But I want to give a special thank you to Fran, who is a guy that, let's give him a clap. This is, this is a guy who I'm on the phone with probably every single day, all different times of the day, texting, emailing, anything I ever ask for, he tries his best to get it done, and most things he gets done. Mike Cassidy, he's, he's one of his right-hand men. I want to congratulate and thank you as well. I mean, me and Mike on the weekend, just give him a hand clap. We go, we go back and forth about trees and what should be done, and, and he gives his expert opinion, so these are the two guys, these are, and Kevin Arahill, you know, these are the leaders at the DPW that are really, really getting it done. They're getting, they're ringing the most you can ring out of, of the DPW, you know, with what, with what they have. These guys, I, I enjoy coming to work every single day to work with these guys, and I appreciate what you do, so thank you.
Before Councilman Sun does his presentation, I neglected to make an announcement when I did the, the, can I have everyone's attention? Oh, wait a minute. For the record, I'd like to recognize former councilwomen Barbara Toffler and Marie Warnake that are here with us this evening, and I also would like to recognize Board of Ed trustee Howard Rose. Before you begin, I just want to make a quick announcement. Right before the moment of silence, I neglected to announce that on Wednesday evening, June 24th, the Black Clergy Council of Inglewood, Teaneck and Vicinity will be holding, hosting a night of solidarity and prayer. It will be held at Community Baptist Church of Inglewood, 224 First Street at 7:30 PM. I think that it's important as a community that we stand with one another against these type of violent acts, because truth be told, this could have happened in any house of worship, and we need to stand against this ignorance and, and stand with the families. They're also collecting contributions to fund the families for the victims, and if anyone is interested in making a donation, they can visit www.emanualchurch.org, so thank you. Councilman Sun.
Madam Mayor, fellow council members, again, thank you for the opportunity to speak from this side of the dais. It's been, it's been about a year since I've, since I've been here, and to provide a background for the council, for the public, and for the staff to help make an effective decision regarding OT Park. There are more than two dozen parks in Teaneck. We have a combination of active and passive parks. We have passive parks such as Tokaloka Park, Mattie Feldman Nature Preserve. We also have plenty of active parks, whether it be Amon Park, Phelps, Sagamore, Argon, and we certainly have the Rota Center as a location for, for recreation. Basically, the history of OT Park goes back to the Depression. Many people were sent to, out to Teaneck instead of going to the swamps of Florida. They were here buying They were here buying houses in Teaneck. They bought the property. Many of these were foreclosed. It was swampy land. And as the record described, the land was ooze, mire and gunk that was home to herds of rats and squadrons of mosquitoes. We probably have fewer rats in Votee Park, but I think the mosquitoes have not been quite eradicated yet. Central Park, as it was originally known, was created in 1940 on the back of a grant from the Works Projects Administration as part of the New Deal that amounted to $340,000 or what would be more than $5 million in current funds. It was renamed in 1959 for Milton Votee, who had been mayor for 12 years, a council member for 29 years. And as Mattie Feldman said at the time, it was 19 years too late. It should have been done when it was first created. Going forward, the park stretches 2,700 feet north to south. That's just about half a mile, or the equivalent of 10 city blocks. It is the township's most intensely-developed park, and it basically falls into three distinct zones marked by the yellow bars. Below the bottom yellow bar, where basically below the sportsplex, you have the bandshell, which was created as part of the original Central Park project, and the playground, which are in the sphere of influence of the Rota Center. If someone is there, is at a concert, is going to a bathroom, they're going towards a parking lot, they're going towards the Rota Center. We need to have, again, facilities at the sportsplex, where there are none now, but the most intensively-developed areas at the north end of the park, where there are three baseball fields, what are called clubhouse, middle and new. The clubhouse itself, where there are a pair of bathrooms, one men, one women, swimming pool, basketball courts, inclusive playground, tennis courts, paddleball courts, and coming soon, the splash pad. We need to have infrastructure. We have insufficient parking if you're there on a Sunday afternoon, if you're there when sports events are going on. We just don't have the infrastructure that we need to take care of that. Clearly, the situation is that the fields were flooded. You could have a situation where you had two or three beautiful days in a row, where the Teaneck Junior Soccer League was canceling games because the fields were still flooded from rain two or three days earlier. Above and beyond the base costs, there were also $583,000 in extras, most notably the press box that was added to the project. But what that created was a world-class athletic facility with no bathrooms, no concession stands, no storage for the organizations that use that field. Going to the next slide, the project and the 4,300 square foot number, you know, did not come from nowhere. You know, this was something that was presented to the council in February, this document here, where John Ficaro describes that the new building that would be built for the concession stands and bathrooms would be 4,300 square feet. The number we have is $73,000 for a design. We've since added in a portion of that to cover the work on the clubhouse field and some of the other baseball fields up north. But again, looking at what is the source of the specifications and where did that come from. Based on estimates of using the design costs to construction costs of about 12 to as much as 18 as a factor, we would be looking at costs of what could be more than $1 million, which could be two years' worth of most funds, and basically use up that entire amount, while still not meeting the significant needs at the north end of the park. Just the 4,300 square feet, this is a wonderful website, monsterhouseplans.com. I'm not endorsing them. This happens to be an exactly 4,300 square foot home. I would love to move into this place. Three and a half bathrooms, which I think would cover our bathroom needs, four garages, a couple of bedrooms. There would be a kitchen as well. Now, just as a benchmark, there are 11,000 single-family homes in Teaneck. Out of those 11,000, only 200 have more than 4,300 square feet. And assuming that all those homes are two-story homes, there are only seven homes that would have a footprint of 4,300 square feet. 4,300 square feet is a very, very, very large space. And going to the next slide, just to go through what our options are, we can do nothing and continue to use a port-a-potties. It's really not a viable option. We do have a building alongside, basically in the center of the park, on the park's east side, that is completely run down, that is not centralized, that would not be accessible. That is not a viable option. We can build as proposed, which would not meet our concerns and the issues at the north end of the park. We can also go, and again, a number of township residents have recommended, the use of prefabricated structures. There are several companies that produce these prefabricated structures that could be combined to meet the needs. Or to go through a design build, to come up with the specifications that would lay out the details for what it is we need, how large the bathrooms would be, how large the concession stands would be, and specify that not only would the bidder come up with a design, but actually build that. And to also consider expansion of the clubhouse. And going to the final slide, again, what I would like to see is to allocate those resources and split them up. We have a swimming pool that is located right next to the clubhouse, where there is a single men's room, a single woman's room, that often, in the busiest time of the years, becomes utterly unusable to members of the public. And unfortunately, if people are in a swimming pool and they don't feel comfortable going to a bathroom, you know, we better watch out. We better hope that we are providing the facilities that all the people at the north end of the park, whether they're in the pool or on the baseball fields, are available. And I would like to see that done through expansion of the clubhouse, adding another pair or two of bathrooms for men and women, so that we have adequate facilities at the north end of the park, while coming up with a significantly smaller but appropriate structure at the south end of the park, near the sportsplex to serve those needs. We did discuss at a previous council meeting, putting out an RFP, putting out bids. And again, we should put this out and get multiple bidders on this project. And I think that has a really significant potential opportunity to save costs on that, and to plan and to provide those resources for future needs. And we have significant future needs for other recreation needs in the township going through future years, so that we have those funds available. And again, I hope that this helps, both for members of the public, members of the township council, you know, helps frame this decision that we should do something, we should do something as soon as possible to address this need, while also meeting the needs of the entire township at both the south and the north end of the park. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is he going to take questions?
Not at this time. We now have a presentation by the Enslaved Africans Memorial Monument Committee.
My name is Patricia King Butler. I live at 624 Ramper Road. I have been a resident here, more or less, for 42 years. I'm delighted to be here to present and to be a part of this committee, that given the situation that's occurred in Charleston, South Carolina, is even more significant and important today for us to be doing this.
Hi, I'm the co-chair with Pat. We are here to represent our committee. Could our committee members stand, please? We're here. I have been a teacher in Teaneck for 18 years. And Angela Taylor.
First, I would like to say thank you to the committee, and I'd most certainly like to just show my appreciation to Ms. Lillian White, a visionary in our community and activist, to see so far in the future, to preserve this community and to honor those people that have come before us. Teaneck, as you know, has always been a multicultural community. And that has been signified through the African burial ground that was discovered several years ago, that Ms. Taylor was a huge part of. And so, this committee is really on the forefront of something tremendous. I think if more communities were involved in preserving their history and culture than we are, maybe the hatred wouldn't be so rampant. The mission of our committee is not just to propose this monument to honor African-Americans, but to serve as a symbol for a community that prides itself on its multiculturalism. In addition to that, our youth, which are the most important in this town, that's why we have the Youth Advisory Board, and all of us here engaged on some level, as educators, parents, what have you, with the children, to make sure that they know where they come from and moving forward what their responsibility is to the community. And that this has been a town that has struggled and continues to struggle to bring together unity. I think having the memorial will be significant in that it will remind them that they must learn, not just tolerance, but to live together, because they understand who they are and where they've come from.
Yeah, all right. Well, as the slide reads, "We must remember..." And thank you.
You know, it's very difficult for me to talk about this in an abstract way, given this atrocity that happened, that occurred over the week. I think that, based on what you see up there, the resilience and the resistance to enslavement, though 300 years ago, quite clearly is current today. And it means that we, as a community, we have to figure out ways to address what could be permeating this hatred that's going on, this ignorance that's rampant. I really applaud the council for their vision and foresight in agreeing and passing the ordinance to have the Holocaust memorial, along with potentially our memorial. And I think other groups that are disenfranchised, who are targeted, should join this effort as well. So, thank you to the council.
I'm sorry. We're going to read the objective at this point. The objective for the committee is the Enslaved Africans Memorial Monument Committee seeks to erect a monument to commemorate the people of African ancestry, whose endurance, resilience and resistance to enslavement made significant contributions to American history, particularly Bergen County and the township of Teaneck. On the next slide, you'll see actual pictures that are relevant to that. To the left, you'll see the slide of the Zabriski Kip Cadmus House. Dr. Lattenheim, I'd like to acknowledge, gave us permission, thanks to Deanne Ip, who made the connection with us. We were able to get in to the home and take pictures of shackles which were found in that particular home. The bricks which were exposed showed the lost history of the enslaved people who actually built the home. So, that piece was critical in understanding what enslaved Africans' history, who, as in the earlier slide, we talked about the voiceless. When you lose history, particularly written history, Deanne helped me to understand how important the history of architecture and physical things that you have a harder time to erase. I'd also like to thank the council, again, we can go to the next slide, for the burial ground sign, because, again, Deanne and I came here to talk about the fact that it had been a while since the sign, and it had been agreed upon that the sign would be erected, and how critical that was in marking that as a historic place. So, the wordage on the sign, Arnold Brown and a few other of the local historians painstakingly wanted to make sure that the words were done right. My poem was included in the burial ground sign. So, I'm grateful that I've been a part of all of these projects. So, at this point, you can go on to the next slide. Thank you.
This project's approval, as you can see, means that there will be a symbol of community unity. It will also acknowledge our shared history of triumphs over tragedy. And it will also highlight the sameness of the human spirit in connection to a higher calling, that we hope that we can live up to that creed. It will also uphold the tradition of Teaneck as a trailblazer in the fight for social justice that is ongoing. We also hope that we will partner with local community-based organizations, human rights organizations, houses of worship, cultural organizations, in order that we can use this history to teach the public, teach our youth, so that memorial really becomes a significant part of the social fabric of Teaneck.
Okay, so, you can go on to the... Oh, wait, our plan, I'm sorry. Our plan is to follow the guidelines and footprint put forth by the Teaneck Township Council. I can read from here. Select an artist, partner with the Teaneck Public Library and other community-based organizations, as Pat already said, for prompting further inquiry and learning relative to the enslavement of Africans' Memorial Monument. And the goal date of completion is spring of 2017. What was this? We may not understand. It's okay.
Finally, it is our hope, and we hope that everyone will be in collaboration with us, that for the restorative justice movement to grow strong, it must recall its past. If you don't understand the past, you most certainly won't be able to move forward in the future. If you are ignorant of the past, especially where you live, again, it would be very difficult to navigate the future. The Sanghofer bird is our symbol for this organization, and so, it signifies in the integral symbols from West Africa, that we must understand our past in order to understand the future. So, we thank you.
And at this time, I'd like to thank the town council, Mayor Parker, and all of the council members, Councilman Son and Castle, who's been our liaison, and Dr. Pruitt, of course, all of the entire council. We thank you, and we thank the public for your time. Thank you.
We thank all of you for working together towards this worthy cause. And it wasn't too long ago that Lillian Lewis actually came before us and mentioned that she was putting together a committee. So, I'm glad to see that there is a plan now in place. And I would like to ask for an update as to where we're at in defining what the footprint is going to be, so that we can start the implementation of these plans. Before you start, Councilman Pruitt has a comment.
Yeah, I think we should have an update from the committee, but I think that we also should set aside a time, pardon the expression, a workshop, where we can discuss the parameters of what these memorials, what their constraints are, so they can get started and get any artists and do the things that they have to do. I guess in the update, we'll find out how many possible sites there are and get some idea. But I think the public needs to have some input in terms of what the parameters are for all of the models, so they can begin to design the actual model.
Councilman Castle.
Yes, first and foremost, thank you, ladies, very much for giving this very timely presentation to the council. I say timely because this past weekend, clearly, we celebrated, I don't want to say celebrated, we acknowledged the 150th anniversary of Juneteenth. I said this past weekend, we acknowledged the 150th anniversary of Juneteenth. And this presentation in and of itself, just like Juneteenth, is a reminder of such atrocities that have occurred in our past. I believe the saying goes, if you're ignorant to the past, then you're doomed to repeat it. And I'd like to say that I think that we're, at this moment, at this time, we are repeating our past. We are repeating our past because we've been saddled by a series of racially motivated events, the most recent being the events of Charleston, South Carolina, last week, by an individual who wanted to start yet another civil war in his diatribe. And, you know, I said it this weekend, and I'll say it again, there's much more that we can do to protect our folks here on... to protect our folks here on our American shores, rather than sending our brave men and women to foreign shores to fight other battles. One of the fights that we need to take up here is the fight of education, of educating people of our past. You know, we know about the tragic story of Solomon Northup, who, a freed black man who was sold back into slavery, and had to endure some of the things that his, clearly, his ancestors had endured, but even after he had been freed. I think that such a monument in our community would be a freeing of our minds, to allow all individuals in Teaneck, and not just Teaneck but the surrounding areas, to come to a place, and much like the Holocaust Memorial, learn about a past that may not be their own, or a history that may not be their own, but to liberate and free their minds, so that they are not part of the continued persecution that we do see happening across the nation. So, I wanna thank you for your timely presentation. I think that this is something that we definitely, as a council, need to be unanimous in supporting and in moving forward. And I have every confidence that, as it was done with Ms. Lacy and supporting cast, I will say, for the Martin Luther King Memorial, that an equally amazing monument could be erected to remind individuals of a tortured past, and it can be done in a very respectful way, so that individuals come there and they feel inspired that we have progressed, not that we will continue to regress. So, thank you very much for your presentation. I look forward to working with you. As someone who sits here, as a beneficiary of decades of slavery and progress that has been made, to afford me an opportunity to represent people that look like me and that don't, I thank you for your presentation, and I look forward to working with you.
Do you have an update on the committee?
At last, we spoke, as related to the number of plots, we had sent back to Price, I believe, Mr. Attorney, a request. Are you, you're waiting for a report from us? Okay, okay, I, I didn't know you were waiting for us to make a presentation to council we've given that report, okay.
So, just to take a step back, it's very, very easy for us who live up here in the north to have the fantasy that slavery was something that took place very, very far away. There were plenty of slaves in New Jersey. There were plenty of slaves in New Jersey after slavery was eliminated. There were slaves in New Jersey in the Teaneck and Hackensack area until after 1865. New Jersey, very, very sadly, dragged its heels and was one of the last to pass the 13th Amendment, waiting until 1866. This is something that happened here. We do have recommendations from Mr. Price, and I think we've spoken, and we've discussed, and we will be meeting with advisory boards, again, also meeting with the Historic Preservation, Patriotic Observance Advisory Board, Advisory Board on Community Relations, to get their feedback and support for the plans. We have had a few questions about the number of prospective sites and trying to, you know, trying to adjust that correctly. And I do hope that we can have a more specific presentation at the July 14th meeting, where we will have some feedback from those boards and commissions, and to be able to speak with Mr. Price. The, you know, I thank the Enslaved Africans Memorial Monument Committee, and again, Ms. Lewis, and again, to, you know, to all those who welcomed us, to Councilman Castle and I, to have the opportunity to speak to the group. You know, it's George Santiano who said that those who forget history are doomed to repeat it. And we must not only remember our past, we must never forget that no community has monopoly on the horrors of man's inhumanity to man. It really is so sad that it's necessary to come forward in this day and age to serve that reminder to our entire community. And I hope that we can work together with all the organizations that have come forward, and to see and to work with you, to work forward towards successful implementation, and to integrating and creating a municipal green that is really a hallowed ground for all those organizations that serve to recognize the past and help remind our entire community that we must never forget.
So, just to kind of summarize this, at the July 14th meeting, there'll be a presentation from the committee for the council to make a decision, so that we can move forward with both monuments. Is there any other action that we need to take as a council to accept? Okay.
You go first. Age before you, okay. We have another chance, as Teaneck, to make the New York Times in terms of our human rights feelings across the country, and we have to do it right. This is the municipal green of Teaneck, and there may be additional groups that meet the criteria that we set forth, and we've gotta flesh that out, so that we don't, you know, set it up so that another group that comes forward says, well, you can't do it because you don't meet something. We have to look forward to getting ahead of that. So, I don't know how many sites there're gonna be, two, three, four possibilities. But it can't, each one can't dominate the village green. It's gotta fit within the parameters that fit in a very positive way as a representation of the group that they are representing. And I think that it's a wonderful idea. I know that there is, there are some adjustments that are gonna have to be made for what people would like to see. But we've gotta have a standard in terms of square footage, height, and things like that, that everybody has to adhere to, and it's a delicate balance. So, as we go into this discussion, we have to understand that it's a delicate discussion. But we wanna get, moving forward with all deliberate speed, so that the groups can begin to find the artists and get the support and get the money, whatever it is it takes to do it. But it is, it is, it is not a light undertaking. So, I'm just trying to put the caution out there ahead of time, rather than try to fix it later.
My only comment really is, what took so long? It's, you know, this has my full support, this is something that's long overdue. I'm happy, you know, we look up, we look up at the day, we talk about diversity in Teaneck, we could look up at the dais and see, and I'm, you know, especially what we're looking to put on the monuments, we're putting up there between the Holocaust and the enslaved Africans, what it means to everyone on the dais and everyone in the room, and the diversity is huge. You know, I could look up over here, and I could look straight ahead, and I have a very good angle, where the diversity in Teaneck up over there, and I'm really proud of where we come in. This is another step in that great direction.
Thank you. So, I believe what you are hearing is that you have the full support of the council, we're just waiting for the final details for the specifications of the site. And once we have that, we'll be able to move forward and advise you as to what the parameters are. So, thank you, again, for coming in. Again, like Councilman Castle said, it certainly is a timely topic, given what we're going on right now in our country. And we must never forget, every opportunity that I have a chance to sit in a dais to represent the town, I realize that I stand on the shoulders of giants, and that if it were not for those enslaved and who died and were beaten, that I would not be able to have this opportunity. So, thank you for pushing forth this effort. Moving along, we have, request for plastic bag is going to be carried to the next meeting. Naming policy. I had mentioned at a council meeting a few weeks back, and I believe that we all got an email, that the family of Jane Fiedler is looking to name a portion of the Chestnut Plaza, specifically where the Cupcake Factory, or the Cupcake, what's it called, Cupcake, Zoe's Cupcake, Zoe's Cupcake, they're looking to put a tribute there. We don't have a policy in effect, but I would like to see us sort of move this along, much like we did with Mary Topalski, and just having some sort of a banner over the Cupcake to call it Jane Fiedler Way.
And as we discussed, we've been doing this on an ad hoc basis, I think we've had, just the bandwidth on, of the monuments and memorials committee has been focused on the monuments. But absolutely, that we should come up with an overall policy, so that as there are worthy individuals who are worthy of being honored, that we have a methodology developed, so that we have a standard for future, right?
Would council have any objections to the manager reaching out to the family to determine what it is? I know that they're not looking to name the street, but just to have a plaque calling the site where the Cupcake Factory is, Jane Fiedler Way, or some sort of tribute to her. Is there any objection?
No.
Alright, so.
Since the building is owned privately, maybe we can do it on the sidewalk right in front, put a plate right in there.
Yeah, thank you for that suggestion. So, I'll reach out, they've been contacting me, so I'll send an email that you'll be reaching out to them, and I'll send you, I'll copy you on the email. Thank you. Council Liaisons, 2015, 2016?
May I re-listen this on the agenda? I have, there were two nominations, two previous meetings, one specifically for Councilman Hamidine to serve on Let's Move, I believe, going into this, this year, into next year, and for Councilman Stone to serve on the Library Board.
Let's Move, an addition to me, or?
Well, I just need to know who's okay serving where, but I have some vacancies, and I just wanna see if everybody is comfortable where they are before I do a resolution. So, affirmative action advisory board is vacant, so I need a representative.
Do they meet? Are they meeting now? They are? They are?
Bergen County Community Development Regional Committee, I have Councilman Castle as the representative, and Mayor Parker. Board of Education, Councilman Castle. City Land Management Group, Councilman Schwartz. Teaneck Clean and Green Advisory Board is vacant. Advisory Board on Community Relations, Councilman Stone. Environmental Commission, Councilmember Hamidine.
I'll take Clean and Green.
Okay. The Forum, Councilmember Hamidine. PGC, Preserve the Teaneck Green Belt Committee is vacant. Hackensack River Greenway Advisory Board?
I will, I will take that.
Okay.
Preserve the Green Belt.
Thank you. And you're also serving Hackensack River Greenway?
Yeah, if it has green in the word, I'll, oh, Clean and Green, I think.
Let's Move, Councilmember Hamidine will be serving. Library Board, Councilmember.
No, I'm serving, if he wants to serve in addition to me. Yes.
Okay.
Library was?
Yes.
And you checked the overdue privileges waiver?
Open Space Recreation and Historic Preservation Trust Fund Advisory Board, okay. Parks, Playgrounds and Recreation, Councilman Schwartz. Patriotic Observance Advisory Board, Councilman Castle. Senior Citizens Advisory Board, Councilman Pruitt. Shea Tree, I have Councilmember Hamidine. Social Services, are you still serving?
I am still on it. I am not able to attend meetings, they're fully aware of it, but if anyone else would like to serve, they meet at 5 o'clock, and it's a difficult hour for me.
Any seekers?
I communicate with them usually via email.
Teaneck Municipal Alliance Against Substance Abuse, Councilman Castle, you're serving, so. TBR Airport Noise Abatement Action Committee, Councilmember Hamidine. Youth Advisory Board, I have both, the mayor and Councilmember Hamidine. So, if that's everything, I can just give a resolution for the next meeting, okay? Thank you.
Annual recommendations for board appointments?
That's gonna be carried, I'm still waiting for results.
Okay. Schedule recognition of Louis Williams. Carry it? Any new business?
Mayor, just, let's go around the old business. What are we doing with the, I'm sorry, the new municipal building dedication and the plaque and all that stuff?
We haven't set a date for that yet. We still have to order the plaque, and once we order the plaque, then we'll schedule the event to dedicate the building, dedicate the plaque at the same time. If council would like to do it in, wanna do it in, try for July or August, I mean, if we gotta have time for the plaque to be made, or do you wanna do it right after the summer?
Mayor's suggesting September, I'm okay with that.
Okay.
It's tough, September's a tough month, though. I think we lose people if we do it in the summer. Although, it could be an evening, it stays light longer. Maybe we could visit the summer, doing it on Tuesday evening? Let's see if we can find a date. No, not yet. She's carrying that, do you have someone you wanna recommend, is that? Okay, no, 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 okay. New Business Communications, recommendations for 671, Commander Walk? Is there any action that's required by council tonight, today?
From the Hackensack River Greenway Advisory Board, and then I also received recommendations from this Deanne Ip, as an independent member of the board, in relation to 671, Commander Walk, so I don't know if council had a chance to review it, or if you want me to re-list it?
I think we need to relist it. Hackensack River Greenway Advisory Board is the same. That was the second email that we received, so it'll be relisted for a July meeting. Committee reports by council liaisons, parking subcommittee report, is there a report this evening?
I think, I'd like actually the manager to report on the conversation that he said as it relates to the parking meter companies and so on and so forth.
We had a meeting with the parking subcommittee, and we discussed the various locations where we could implement a parking meter program. We feel that there's certain areas of the township that we need to focus on, especially areas like Ward Plaza, where we could install parking meters for commuters at that location. I also identified the vendor that was used in Inglewood, who I would like to come give a presentation first to the subcommittee, and the vendor that was used in a couple of other towns that Councilman Castle brought to our attention. So, we need to have another meeting, the subcommittee, and have our presentations from the parking meter vendors, and then after that, we'll be ready to come back to the council. Also, we also made a map of various locations that we believe where we should install parking meters, so, very shortly after we have our meeting as a subcommittee, we'll come back to the council.
And mayor, as it relates to that, to what Mr. Browden said, it seems that by not having balance with all of our municipal lots, we often deter people from going to the paid municipal lots and to the freed municipal lots. So, lots are actually being used, but there's a tremendous amount of revenue that we are missing out on by not actually having paid parking in our municipal lots. The other thing is, if you look at some of the things that are happening in municipalities around us, when you visit there or you frequent their municipal lots, they've actually updated their municipal lots from just the, you know, single metered, quarter-operated meters, to putting these freestanding digital receipt-printing meters. It has not been a deterrent for other municipalities, it is something that we clearly, absolutely the apps that they can download to their phone, it has not been a deterrent for parking from these neighboring municipalities. As a matter of fact, these municipalities are generating a tremendous amount of revenue based on metered parking, even after paying the organizations or the companies that are providing the service. So, it's definitely something that we're gonna be recommending as a, as a subcommittee that the township move forward with. And one of the recommendations that Mr. Browden had made was, he had identified business districts where it might be most advantageous for us to have paid parking. So, you know, to date, we've been discussing an overall clean sweep of business districts, or an overall clean sweep of municipal parking with a phased follow-up to business districts, whether it's business districts first or municipal municipal parking lots, we know we have to get there with everything. It's just, we can't, we can't take, we can't eat the whole apple in one bite, so to speak. So, that's where we are.
Technology Advisory Board?
I can tell you, I can tell you where, where we are, but I just want to make sure that the resolution and everything is.
The original resolution, which was submitted to our office for review, I had to return back to the advisory board on June the 5th, and I made three recommendations included in that resolution. One is to have a definition of what we mean by capital project, that we put the threshold at $36,000, which is the amount of money up, which is the big threshold under New Jersey law with a qualified purchasing agent. We added a provision requiring the board make a recommendation within 30 days of referral, that after 30 days, the manager can proceed to solicit bids or proposal. And we added a provision whereby the manager can request the council to authorize the solicitation of bids or proposals, notwithstanding the failure to refer for the expiration of 30 days in an emergency, never in certain cases. So, now it's up to the council, it's up to the committee and the council as to what they want to do with those recommendations, etc.
And as it relates to that, Mayor, I think, you know, even tonight, we have an ordinance, an introduction of an ordinance in excess, or almost for $3 million, where I believe a little more than a third of it relates to technology. And that's for, you know, computer aided dispatch and so on and so forth. This is a reigning example as to why this advisory board would be so important to the municipality, to ensure that the recommendations that are being made by the police chief and the fire chief, you know, are obviously being weighed against some of the other options that our neighboring municipalities have used, in addition to hopefully, hopefully, lightening the manager's load as it relates to getting these reports. We've been talking, or the council's been talking about consolidated dispatch for quite some time, and now we have the introduction of an ordinance that might actually bring it to fruition, but it's a pretty hefty price tag. And not attach this ordinance is what's driving the estimation of these costs. So, so that we don't put ourselves in a situation where we're questioning another $1,200 printer and needing to get that information. I think that it's been magnified now with a $3 million ordinance, and that this is a perfect example of what should go to the technology advisory board.
Moving on to counsel listed items, court process?
Yes. I put this on just for maybe counsel to start the discussion. I don't know if this is something where we have to add additional funding, or maybe this is something where we could talk to the manager about coming up with some type of policy. But every so often, residents and non-residents get a ticket, maybe, I'm talking about a non-moving violation, like a parking ticket, in error. And rather than coming here and spending the full day, I know that in some jurisdictions, I mean, I know for sure in New York, there's the opportunity for the person to write in and then try to administratively work it out. I'll give you an example. The manager and I were working on a specific case where the resident had the right to park on one side, because I think both sides were blocked from, from parking for paving or something like that, and then one side was lifted, and then this person on top of that had a handicap tag. So, it was very obvious that it was an error, and these things happen. But rather than making, especially this handicap person, come here, spend the full day, three hours, four hours, go through the whole process, maybe there's some type of, maybe we can talk to the judge about coming up with a process where they can just write in to the judge and let the judge decide whether or not he or she should come in for the process.
Well, usually, in those circumstances, if a summons is issued in error, then the person usually, you know, contact, contacts the police department and provides them with the information, or they'll go to one of the councilmen, or they'll come to the manager. If we believe it's issued in error, then they'll dispose of it. The police department will retract that.
So, the process already exists, you're saying?
The process exists, yes.
All right. So, may, I mean, does it make sense to, I don't know how you promote it, or, I don't know, I don't know if there's something that we should be writing on the back of the tickets?
Well, I mean, I think that, I think that that's a choice that an individual person is gonna have to make.
Right.
If they believe that their summons is not issued properly, they should go to the authority that issued the summons first. If they don't get satisfaction from that authority, then they should go to court. I think that, I think that that's clear, and I don't think, I don't, I don't really believe we need anything additional on that personal.
Madam Mayor, I believe that 99.9% of residents think that their only option is to come to court for a hearing. If you get a parking ticket in New York City, there's explicit information on the back of the ticket that that option is available. If the option is available on an informal basis, and tickets are being quasi-adjudicated if they are improper, I think we should at least allow residents or those people who get those tickets that information that, that, that this is available as an option.
So, you're saying on the back of a New York City ticket, it says that it's issued in error?
Yes.
Huh?
Can we just, can we refer?
I'll look into that. Let me, let me look into it.
To the legal department?
I'll take it to my car if you want it.
Let me, let me talk to the chief about that, and we'll look at the summons.
DPW land?
Yes. Having spent, that's not amusement park. Having spent most of my career at, in New York City, they're doing a remarkable job reclaiming the land, and I know that, I believe Mr. Price has said that he hasn't believed it could be built on, but, and I know, I know respect Mr. Price and his expertise when it comes to planning. But I've been down at DPW a few times the last few Sundays, and I can't, I can't really walk away from this thought too much, that there's gotta be something we may be able to do down there. It's a very large land. I understand DPW needs it. I understand the infrastructure there is poor. So, it's at the ripe time to, to when we can, and we have a lot of development going on right now, but more of a project on the side, to see what we can possibly do about bringing some of that land back into use outside of literally dumping grounds. And there's new technology that allows us to build on land that may have been either browned or watered or contaminated. And I really think that we should take another look at that when we get a chance. And I didn't want to, I know that Mr. Price kind of turned that down, so I wanted to bring it back to the council. If there's interest, I'll start putting together something on that. That's Mr. Price.
So, to explore moving it to another site?
Explore what we can, what we can do with DPW land.
I'd be interested in working with him.
It may be nothing. Mr. Price, who's a planner, may also have checked with landscapers and anyone else, the engineers that dig in water, and maybe the answer's no.
If, I mean, if you're gonna be a committee, you might want to start by pulling some of the reports that the manager probably has. We've done an extent, over the years, several different research reports, not only on the needs study for that one facility, as also looking at other potential properties throughout the town.
Yeah.
Okay. Next, pavement use of concrete?
Yes. I live in, in my particular area, has quite a bit of, right south of Route 4 between Garrison and Phelps Park, has a significant amount of cement paving. And I had a chance to speak to Mr. Wilson, who I think left, and I understand that cement paving is obviously a lot more expensive, but at the same time, if you look at some of the streets in my area, it's last decades upon decades upon decades longer. Now, Mr. Wilson off the cuff was able to tell me that the re, the repairing of cement is also extremely expensive, and in today's day and age, when utilities have to repatch, that may make this a non-issue. But it's something I just wanted to take a quick look at, being that we have a lot of paving going on. Doing blacktop seems to be a short-term fix, and I don't say short-term in a few months, I say it's a shorter-term fix. Cement may cost almost double, but may last three or four or five times as much. And it may be, with bonding so cheap, and I hate to borrow money, but, you know, we spend so much labor on repairs, that maybe spending money on materials may be beneficial, and Mr. Stone's about to answer me.
On some of those aspects, again, there are, there are changes. Clearly, the roads do last longer. I mean, for example, not only is money cheap now, but comparatively, asphalt, again, and petroleum, which is the main input to that, is also relatively cheap. So, this, this does rotate cyclically. There is, there is no necessarily right answer that is true at every point in time. But absolutely, we've gotten, I think, Mark Tense and Tilden, some of the, some of the other streets are concrete. They've held up rather well. Some of these are decades old. And given that we have a significant backlog of streets that need to be paved, we may be well-suited to consider that seriously right now. Look at those options where it is appropriate, make a slightly bigger upfront investment, but to see much lower costs in the long run. And I concur that this is an option that we should look at going forward.
So, this is an option that I have discussed with, with the engineer. It's something, something that I thought about. The asphalt streets last 15 to 25, 30 years. Concrete streets, about 60 years. But a concrete street can be five times as much to construct. That is the big issue, if we want to put forth that much in the beginning. So, it can be very significant to install those streets.
If I could, if I could have a further, if I can have a further conversation with the engineer on that, because the 15, sorry, the 15 years, it's just, I just, doesn't seem like that's what we're getting out of it. And I mean that to, I just remember Sussex being paved a few times now, and maybe I'm wrong, you know, the.
No, on those streets, on a street like Sussex or Garrison, it's not Sussex, it's Garrison, heavily trafficked street, it's, it has concrete, the joints are cut out and filled with, with asphalt. That street, the concrete underneath it is moving, and there's heavy traffic, so it probably doesn't last that long. Probably doesn't last the 15. But these concrete roads are constantly moving, and they're gonna crack the asphalt on top. So, I mean, it's, it's something to really think about. It's gonna be significant. We can have a.
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
On the, on cement, I agree. I think we should look at maybe one or two streets this season and see what the pricing would be to, to do one or two streets.
Are you noting that?
Yeah, I'm gonna, we're gonna have a conversation with the engineer, try to get some pricing.
Okay. OpenGov.com?
We, we had an opportunity to have a presentation. We did get a quote from OpenGov. They're certainly anxious to move forward. I think that we would benefit tremendously from a transparency tool that would allow both the staff, council, and members of the public to look through in greater detail through both budgets, actuals, and transactions. You know, we had questions about a bill list item at a previous meeting. I think residents should be able to look back, not just at a specific meeting, but, but again, transactions from that vendor over a period of time. This will help with many of the open requests. And whether we use OpenGov or we want to look at other vendors, I would like to recommend that we move forward on this item.
Have they come in?
It was, yeah, we can ask them again. The numbers they came up with, and it's, it's based on the size of our budget, is an upfront $2,500 fee plus $9,000 a year, and that would be a recurring fee. One of the things, and I'm not sure if Christine Brown had an opportunity to follow up, but they offered the opportunity to set up a model site, where we could export data, where they could come up with, with a, you know, a dummy site that would allow us to evaluate that and use some of the analysis tools and graphical tools that are available from OpenGov, and see whether that works for us, just to get a feel for it. And I think that could be a very valuable opportunity to be able to look at data we know, not, and not just look at some other municipality where we don't know the numbers as well as we hope to here.
I would also like to know, to do a comparison on the software that we currently have, just to see what the differences are.
We don't have any software like this. This is, this is something totally.
Yeah, it doesn't replace, it would be.
An addition to?
On top of, it allows.
So, can we invite them to come in?
Yep, that's what I have written.
Okay. You're next.
And I'll, I'll move this to the next meeting. I was expecting some more details that would just better explain this. There have been issues with residents who have been trying to put in permeable pavers. The ordinance that, that the zoning subcommittee came up with does indicate that they're permeable pavers, but the only, the only pavers that meet that are grass pavers, which have a mesh, you know, the grass actually completely grows through. It's, it's almost impossible to walk on in bare feet. There are other permeable pavers, and other municipalities either exclude those or have some sort of percentage that count as 50% of coverage, and it might provide an option.
I'm confused, and maybe the ordinance had to just be a little, was better delineated, but, and Dr. Pruitt, correct me if I'm wrong, I think the only thing that we were, we were concerned about, we didn't specify the type of pavers. We wanted to make sure they were permeable, but also that there was no cement underneath it, that the water was able to go underneath. So, I don't know. Somebody else complained to me about the grass pavers. So, maybe that's just an error in the way it was written?
It may be exactly that, but the, the building department.
Right.
This seems to be very, very clear that they believe that it's only grass pavers, that.
I don't even know what a grass paver is, and I know that I was one of the people that brought it up, so.
I have a comment on that. I, I probably shouldn't say this, but I have permeable pavers on my driveway, and the building department did not make a lot of noise about that. They said, as long as there's no cement under it, it meets the requirement. Now, they may have changed their, their ordinance or something, but I think that the pavers that people are putting down with the sand base have been passing in terms of the.
Mr. Attorney, could you just look into the matters to make sure that it's as counsel intended? Votey Park bathrooms?
I don't know how, how, I mean, I guess this was probably from our concern that we didn't want what was there, there. So, I think we're not moving forward.
Let's hold it.
Let's hold it, yeah.
Quality of life, need to hire part-time compliance officer?
Quality of life, okay. There's a recommendation that we hire a part-time compliance officer to improve the quality of life in T-Net. Now, people may not know what I'm talking about unless you live next door to a house with the roof is falling in, or the shingles are falling down, or the paint is stripping off, or, or there are trucks and cars parked on the grass that don't move. We probably have ordinances in place to deal with that, but we don't have anybody to follow up on that. And I'm recommending very strongly that we get somebody on a part-time basis to go around the town and kind of follow up on those kinds of problems. Yes.
Deputy Mayor?
Fundamentally, I'm opposed to it because of the reason of just adding an extra body to our payroll. But after that, I understand why you would like to see something like this. There are so many issues with this. First of all, you know, you know that, that we're all working very hard to try to fix the building department process, right? I call it the process. This will just add additional issues to the building department process. That's number one. Number two is, we have a very competent, capable, responsive health department, where in my tenure on council, I've never received one complaint about them, but yet they're very aggressive and proactive and reactive when it comes to following up on property maintenance issues. This, this, that falls under the health department, property maintenance issues. Make no mistake about it, sorry, thank you. Make no mistake about it, this will harass, hurt, and, and create a problem for residents that are suffering. Not, it's not the residents that you intended about, which is the neighbor next door that doesn't have a roof. It will create additional hardships on our residents that are struggling to pay taxes, and nobody in this room will be immune from someone who's being proactive. If you're living next to a house that doesn't have a roof, you should call the health department, and the health department will be very responsive. I deal with the manager literally, probably about 10 to 15 of these situations a week. He tells, you know, he gets the starting, he tells me the, the progress report, and he tells me where we are, where we are at the end. We've never, ever had an issue as far as lack of responsiveness. This is someone being proactive to, to, to cause additional bottleneck, additional pain and, and problems and, and costs for our residents. I'm absolutely against this. Fix the building department, then we could talk about adding.
Okay, Mr. Katz.
Are there four, are there four?
Mr. Katz, I believe that maybe the health department should deal with it, but I don't think that it's being handled. There's a building on Intervell Road, there's the poster child for what I'm talking about. The building, for at least a year, has been there, and the roof is all the way in.
That's the picture that you showed us, right?
That picture I showed you. There's another, another one on Beaumont Avenue. It's all boarded up, and it's falling down. There are buildings on Tryon Avenue that are unoccupied, and they're not being followed up on. We need somebody to follow up on that. I don't care if they come from the Department of Health or the building department, but we need to be able to give release to people who live in the community, who take care of their property, and who, and get after people who don't take care, take care of their property.
Do I have four nodding heads?
I want somebody.
To support a compliance. -to support a compliance officer?
I'm in the middle. I was actually, maybe, yes, but maybe we reach out to Englewood or Bergenfield if there's a part-time or a share, or if they have one or something, I'm just trying to-
I don't care. If the issue is just these houses that you're mentioning, why can't we just report them to the manager, let it go to the health department, and let's be responsive?
Can I take, can I take that?
Go ahead, take it.
I understand your concern. You've always been an advocate of people and their houses. The issue is, is that there's a lot of these houses that if I were to report them to the manager, I would actually have to quit my job and spend all day calling it in. The corner, the corner of Lincoln and Cumberland on my block is now overgrown with weeds, and the DPW is trying to keep up, but this is a season where everything's growing. The house has been in foreclosure for ten years. The house next door has got bricks falling all over the place. So I, I mean, I'd love to bother the manager, I have his email on speed dial, but I really think we need to really crank it up and out. And I understand where you're coming from, I'm not, I'm not-
It's going to hurt and harass every single resident in this town.
But when it comes to-
You have a problem with your neighbor, you complain to the health department.
I love my neighbors. We have no problem with our neighbors. And I made complaints today, I made complaints today to the health department about other people who get the same phone calls I get all the time. And I'd love to have a quicker response because I know, and that's why I like the part-time system, so we're kind of limiting our exposure on the salary, but getting the word out to people, it's time to start taking care of your, your properties. It may be the banks, but it's not mine.
Councilman Castle?
I love you.
We, we spoke about the S-word, snow. If you go back to the winter, there were a number of stores, there were a number of residents who did not shovel, and we did nothing about it. We have an opportunity not to harass people, but to ensure that ordinances and resolutions that we've passed are enforced. And of course, you know, we can, we can attune that, and again, same thing with the health department or the police department, but there are real quality of life issues. Other municipalities, I provided an example, that Tenafly was hiring two code, two part-time code enforcement officers. This is an opportunity to have a mechanism, especially part-time, where we are able to cover the costs, where we are able to ensure that these quality of life measures are dealt with. Hopefully, these will make, and will trigger a response from, from those people who are violating these ordinances, where we can get these things resolved and be able to address them appropriately. I do support this.
One more comment, Councilman Castle?
Dr. Pruitt, I do also support your recommendation that we hire a code enforcement officer. And I liken it to this, you know, we have parking enforcement officers, right? And they are, I mean, they are enforcing parking regulations that are happening here in our municipality.
Because we have no meters.
Well, yes, we have no meters. But at the same time, and I'll give you an example, I just recently moved from a house on Maple Street to Willow Street. And just today, as we were sitting outside waiting for, you know, to, to begin the meeting at 6:00 PM, my former neighbor came up to me and said, "The owners of the house have not cut the grass since you've been there, and they haven't taken out the trash, and now there are bottles that are spilling over from the recycling because, you know, they're going through and they're, you know, doing a gut renovation and so on and so forth." But if there was a code enforcement officer, the several weeks I've been out of that house, the grass is, you know, past the knees. Owners should be held accountable if they're not taking care of their properties, whether it's from, you know, snow removal to grass cutting. You know, people's property values are being determined by the neighborhood as well as just their home, so.
We have four, four nodding heads, so.
Mayor, can we take a, can we take a vote on that? I'm very uncomfortable with the whole nodding heads thing, I've said it before. I would like to make a motion, or I'd like Dr. Pruitt to make a motion, and I'll support it. I would like to make a motion that we-
It's not a formal motion.
Well, it's his idea. I support it.
You're directing me to do something.
Yeah, to do a resolution to, or an ordinance to establish, the manager to establish the position, an ordinance, and formal action will be taken on that, so.
Second.
Yes. Today. Council, do you have a long-
I don't have, I don't have long when I think that.
Because I want to, I want to open up the public, yeah. Introduction to the 2015 Cedar Lane Special Improvement District budget?
2015 Cedar Lane Special Improvement District budget.
That's it?
I just need a vote.
I'll make the motion, Resolution X.
Have we set the time for the hearing?
The time for the hearing is August 11th at 8:00 PM, Council Chambers, 818 Teaneck Road, Teaneck, New Jersey.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Well, now, I'll be now opening up the meeting to public hearing for-
I just have to take a vocal on it, because it's a resolution. Councilmember Castle?
Yes.
Councilmember, oops, sorry. Deputy Mayor Katz?
No, this is, yes, Cedar Lane, this is the Cedar Lane Special Improvement District.
Okay, so we're not, I'm sorry, I was on the-
Yeah, we're moving to Cedar Lane.
Okay. Deputy Mayor Katz? This is just on introduction, Cedar Lane Special Improvement District.
When do we get to have input on this?
Public hearing scheduled for August 18th.
No.
Okay. Councilmember Pruitt?
Yes.
Councilmember Schwartz?
Yes.
Now that he read it, he says yes.
When can we make changes, if we want to make changes, if that's what you want?
Yeah.
Councilman, I mean, Stan? When can we make changes to the Cedar Lane budget?
You can do it before you approve it, or you can do it before you adjourn it, or you can do it here.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to ask that we ask, that we include in this budget the repairs that we just recently did authorize for Cedar Lane, for their grates.
Well, let's introduce it, and then we'll, we'll make that change.
Why don't you do the vote? Because I was in the middle.
Sure.
Do it. Okay, so you're sending a motion to introduce?
We did, we have that.
Okay. So the roll call, Councilmember Castle?
I'm sorry.
We're giving a vote on introduction for Cedar Lane Special Improvement District?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Katz?
No.
Councilmember Pruitt?
Yes.
Councilmember Schwartz? Councilmember Stone?
Yes.
Yes. And Councilman, Deputy Mayor Katz would like for us to amend the budget to include the repairs for the street scape. We will now have a public hearing on the property located at 1086 Palisades Avenue. This is the property across the street from the Rota Center to provide additional parking for Votee Park and the center. Council has every intent to pass this ordinance. It's required by law that we have the hearing, and we're not looking, we want to hear from people who oppose it and not people who support it. We, we support it.
Let me just give a little introduction. We've already reached previously an agreement with PSENG as to the terms of the construction of this document, of this parking lot. We're going through this procedure because Green Acres requires it. There's a question whether we have to do this, so we're going to do both things. We're going to go ahead with the parking lot, and we're also going to have the necessary hearings. In addition to this hearing, there's going to be another hearing, I think it's going to be on August 11th, if that's when, if that's when the August meeting is. There's no further action after the public hearings are concerned, because you've already agreed with PSENG to build the parking lot. So this is really procedurally, if somebody opposes it, they would have to bring their own actions to stop the construction of the parking lot, but you do have to conduct the hearing.
So the hearing is now open. Anyone wishing to address the council, please recognize, raise your hand to be recognized.
No, just, just, just the parking lot that Votee parks. Just the parking lot at Votee Park, that's all this hearing is on.
Just can you, can you just say exactly where it is, on the other side of the road?
It's on the other side of the road, correct. Jacent to the railroad tracks.
Generally speaking, it's probably okay, but I would like presentation to show exactly where it is and how it will look, and safety crossing the, the, well, Palisades Avenue for seniors to, to, to the Rota Center. I think it should, should be done, because otherwise it's not clear, both aesthetically, and you all took oaths to leave the town more beautiful than it was when you accepted office, okay? And safety, okay? Could it be done so that people who park on the other side of Palisades Avenue to safely cross to the other side and proceed to whatever they want? I think it should be clearly done before any resolution is, is, well, just promoted. So in this respect, I think it's half-cooked, it's raw, and you should not go for any kind of vote or vernary. First, it should be properly discussed with all of the issues that I raised. Thank you very much.
Anyone else wish to address the council? No one else? Hearing is now closed. We will now open up the meeting for Good and Welfare. This is an opportunity for you to address any item on the agenda, but before I do so, I just want to make a couple of agenda changes. I'd like to table Resolution P. Roll call?
Also, the June 9th closed session minutes.
And the June 9th closed session minutes tables. I need a second. And one other table.
Is there a second for that?
I seconded, but there was just one other table.
Vote of seven, please. Vote of seven.
Okay. Roll call?
Councilmember Castle?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Katz?
Yes.
Councilmember Pruitt?
No.
No?
No.
Okay.
This is the poll?
The table.
The table.
Table.
Yes.
Yes. I also want to table another resolution.
Mayor, while you're searching, I'd like to table Resolutions F, G, and H.
P? We did, F what?
F, G, and H.
G. Second.
Councilmember Castle?
Yes.
Can we just on that motion?
No, there's no discussion. She has to now vote.
No.
Councilmember Pruitt?
No.
Councilmember Schwartz?
No.
Councilmember Stone?
Yes.
Now, I'd like to make an agenda motion to Resolution H, well, actually, to Resolution I'd like to change that nomination to Monica Honus. Monica Honus for Resolution F.
Second.
What you're saying is that when this resolution comes up, you're going to pull it and then make the amendment?
Yes.
And you're just advising the public, there's no argument if this doesn't-
Yes, okay.
So that the public can discuss it if they want to.
I also will be amending Resolution G to appoint Avi Fresh.
Second.
And I will be amending Resolution H to appoint-
Mark-
Mark- Mark Metalstein for Resolution H.
Second.
So the, the same individuals that were nominated, just in different positions.
Did you have someone to nominate?
I did. Oh, I'd like to nominate Avi Fresh to move up to Board of Adjustment, number four, to replace Warren Hodges' inspired term.
Was he nominated to that?
No, he wasn't. That's why I'm nominating him.
You're nominating, you're not voting on it tonight.
So Resolution will go on for July 14th?
Yes.
Warren Hodges, honor him for his service?
Yes.
Before he moves, does that mean he's moving or something?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'll table it after.
So the only motion?
I also like to nominate Atif Rahman to move up to alternate number one.
Second.
I'd like to nominate, that's it.
What was the last one you said? I'm sorry.
Atif Rahman.
That's it. Yeah, because it's 423, and we're holding this one. Yeah, I did. It is on there tonight.
That was alternate one on planning board, on the Board of Adjustment?
Yes. So basically, in essence, I'm nominating Avi Fresh to move up from an alternate to a regular Board of Adjustment member to fill out Warren Hodges', Warren Hodges' term. I'm nominating Monica Honus to replace a regular member for a full term. I am nominating, I'm moving up Atif Rahman from alternate number four to alternate number one. And I am nominating Mark Metalstein and Zev Green to be alternate numbers two and three, which would leave one alternate vacancy on the Board of Adjustment.
Second.
Resolution will be listed in July 14th?
The only official action that was taken, the table of Resolution P, the rest was informative to the public at this point in time.
Except for, some of those were amendments to-
You'll make the amendments, when you, when you finish with Good and Welfare, you want to pull certain resolutions and amend them, that's the way you do it. You're not officially amending them now. You're informing the public what you intend to do.
Mayor, then, just, just for the, the exercise of informing the public, I will be pulling Resolutions F, G, and H merely for the fact, you know, in looking at just the bill list and paying for some of the bills that we are incurring as municipality, based on what current members of the zoning Board of Adjustment, the decision that they've made, that we as a council adamantly are opposed to, I'll be pulling those because I can't see myself, honestly, supporting any reappointment to the zoning Board of Adjustment if we're, if we are indeed trying to take the township in a unified direction, especially knowing that many of the bills that are on the bill list right now are things that many of us would not agree to be paying, simply because they're for things that we adamantly oppose, be it attorney's fees, or shiawate hauls, or what have you.
No, it's a good point. Madam Mayor, I'm sorry, the only comment is though, that we did do a new direction for F and G.
I do, I understand that we did a new direction for F and G. I think for me, the problem I have is, we interviewed these candidates, we had certain conversations in closed session. Many of these new directions are news to me right now. I mean, I had, I had the luxury of having a discussion with my council colleagues in closed session after we interviewed these candidates. Now, the first time I'm hearing that we're making these changes is, is from the dais, and I can't make an informed decision because I don't really know the thought process that, that went into making these changes. So if we can just willy-nilly appoint people or make recommendations, you know, I'd want to nominate Kimberly Jones to be a permanent member of the planning board, right?
And I do as well, but we don't have a vacancy right now to name, to name her there. And the reason why the appointments were made was because I was concerned about the lack of diversity on the board, and wanted to make an adjustment so that the board could reflect the community in which we serve in. I agree with you that both of the statutory boards, we, we need to go in a new direction. But basically, what we did this evening is we, we moved up a council member who has served this, this community.
Former council member, yes.
Yeah, well, former council member who has served this community. If she was a council member, she wouldn't be able to serve. And we also moved up a alternate that has an excellent attendance record, and we appointed two new alternates. So we, we have, we do, we, we are doing what we have been criticized for not doing.
No, I understand that, Mayor. My, my only concern was that the first time I heard about this was moments ago, just like members of the public. And I think it would have been great to have a phone call, or an email, or some type of conversation, one-on-one, if, if these appointments were being made, because we-
Well, then, we would be circumventing the process, because we can't round robin and make discuss, decisions behind the eyes of the public.
I would, I'm not suggesting to make a decision.
Me and Deputy Mayor had a, had a conversation about it.
We had closed session, I mean, there's, there are a lot of things that we could have done that would have made this process much more transparent. I think what's happening is exactly what we've been criticized about, and that is, there isn't a dialogue that happens among all colleagues. It could have been put on the closed session agenda. We could have had this conversation in closed session, but in- But instead, these appointments and these recommendations are being made right now. And I wholeheartedly support the idea of having diversity on the boards so it better represents our community. But, you know, simply picking names out of a hat because they meet the diversity bubble or the metric, I don't think that is a prudent way to make decisions. I think that putting it on the...
Well, I'm not picking names out of a hat just to pick the diversity bubble and, you know, without delving into... I'll just leave it alone. I think that Councilwoman... Former Councilwoman Honus has served this community. She has a good attendance record, and I think that she will do a fine job serving in that position. So with that said, I'd like to open up the meeting to the public for Good and Welfare. This is your opportunity to address...
I'm going to finish my statement, and my statement is this: You're the mayor. If you have that way, you have a telephone. Call your council colleagues.
I would like to open up the meeting to the public. You have an opportunity to address us at this time on any item on the agenda.
First of all, I want to say that Memorial for the African Things... African slavery is a fantastic idea. I hope it's going to be in the same location as the Holocaust Memorial, and I would love to see public school students learn about the Holocaust, and I'd love to see the Jewish private school students learn more about slavery, I think considering our mixed community. I think building and breaking down barriers is the way to go. So I think this is fantastic, and I give a clap to you because this is great. I want to say also that Avalon Bay and... I'm taller than the Bay might, but anyway, Avalon Bay came and gave a presentation approximately four weeks ago, and two weeks ago, Julie Diaz from SEIU 32 came and gave a presentation against Avalon Bay. No offense, I'm ill-informed, as I'm sure you are, as I'm sure many other people are. I'd love to see an open forum, kind of like what you did for CSX. Put the two of them in a room. He said, she said, from both ends of the point of view. One says one thing, you get a rebuttal on the other side. Everybody comes away more educated. I think this is in your purview to create this. You know, I reached out, I wanted to... You know, getting space in this town is very difficult, but I think you have the capacity to do that. In addition, I want to give kudos to Ellie Katz. Four weeks ago, you mentioned the, what do you... The dispatchers, and you wanted a timeline. I called Frank Del Vecchio today, the office, and they were... He's the head of the Office of Consolidation for the Dispatchers, and I was... He was actually on vacation. They passed on his numbers. I was talking to him for a while. And from what I understand, probably about 35, 40% of townships is now using this consolidated service. Based on the numbers that I have, a pamphlet that I gave, that I got, we would save our township, based on size, probably about $400,000. And that's assuming that we're just removing the dispatchers. Now, if we have paid police officers, we would save even more than the $400,000. And if we have paid police officers receiving overtime, we would receive a lot more than the $400,000. So my question is, is being that this goes on back and forth, and the voteee goes on back and forth, I saw the letter dated, it was December 14th. I'm kind of a bit new to this game. So my question really is, is that does the town manager make the decisions, and you guys vote on it and pass it? Or do you guys make the decision and he enacts it? Because I'm kind of hearing that the voteee project was kind of like his pet idea, and you guys are like tabling it for months and months. It's been seven months already. And that the dispatchers are just going on and on and not being moved on.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the council? Councilwoman Toffler, former.
Barbara Toffler. I actually have two things that I'm... So I'm going to try and talk really fast. The first is, obviously, what has happened in Charleston has hit many of us in many ways, not simply because of the racial issue, though that's devastating, but simply because of somebody walking into a church, into a chamber, and shooting people. And I cannot help but remember that during our last campaign in 2000... During the 2012 municipal campaign, and we have another campaign coming up next year, a member of this council, Councilwoman Katz, hired an unstable young man named Emil Lebovitch to come in and speak verbally threats to a particular council member, to me, but it was a threat to the entire room. I remember the day, there were 20 high school students here, and no one knew if this man had a gun. No one knew what happened. The manager, a member, because at one point, he just pulled me out. And I... Yes, I had a little bit of a flashback hearing about this, and I think we have to be very careful that no shenanigans like that, and it's not just shenanigans, be done in this upcoming election. It was a terrible thing, and you owe an apology to everybody who was on the council and everybody in the public for doing a terribly frightening, frightening thing. It's exactly an unstable young man walks into a room and starts saying crazy things. Very, very frightening. Thank God he did not have a gun or any other thing, but there were, as I said, young people here. Second, now, to something positive. I did send all of you a... I did send all of you an email of proposal, which I have made at other times, and I hope that it's something you really can consider, which would be to place a low-rise hotel, like Marriott Courtyard, or Hilton Garden Inn, or something like that, in the American Legion Drive area. I know the big problem building there has been the owner of the land, who has not been particularly cooperative. Mr. Bold, I assume he is still the owner, still the landlord there. But what a low-rise hotel in that area would be fabulous. It would stimulate Cedar Lane. It is near I don't know how many schools, so that everybody who has people staying for Shabbos for the weekend could have them at a hotel. They wouldn't have to put them all up in their homes. They could walk to the synagogues. It would... I think it would be an extraordinary idea. As I said, it would stimulate Cedar Lane. It would bring more life and action. People would shop there. Many of us have family too large to put up for a weekend when they come to visit or any of the holidays. I hope that you will seriously consider... I have no ulterior motive. I don't know anybody at all, but it seems to me that's something you should really, really look into. And when Dr. Pruitt sent me an email and said, "There's merit in this idea," I thought I'll mention it.
Thank you. Thank you.
When I create T-Nex, I want to speak to Resolution K, which concerns a 1,500 T-Nex Road. We refer to it as the Verizon Building. I see some concerns that you have taken some actions and that you are planning for a reexamination of the planning board, I mean, the master plan. I thought it's go to your last council meeting, where you had a group here from the south end of T-Nex, who was opposed to four-story stores and buildings in that area. So we would like to know if you'd extend that same courtesy to North T-Nex Road. We are concerned about our quality of life, and we just don't know what the impact of that density is going to do to our quality of life. It is something that we have to use daily, and we are very concerned about it. You know, this is a short notice. We didn't know that it would be on the agenda tonight, but we do see that you're moving forward, and we hope that whoever, Mr. Priest, who's going to work with the planning board, will express to the planning board the consideration of the residents that live in that area, that he expressed the concerns that we have. And we do have a few. And we'd like to be informed of what is going on with that area. We know summer is coming up, a lot of people out of town, and we may not be able to be at council meetings, or we may not know that there are... Not council meetings, planning board meetings. We'd just like to know when these things are coming up before the planning board. And speaking of quality of life issue, one of my pet peeves is signs on poles. Would it be okay if I pulled them down? I'd like to. Thank you.
Signs on poles. Howard Rose? Do you have a quorum?
Thank you. Howard Rose, I'm speaking as a T-Nex resident, not as a member of the Board of Education nor as a of the planning board. In February, I made a suggestion that was actually accepted and thought of as a non-cost, no-brainer to do, which was to email residents, notice that your taxes are due about a week before they're due. I was told that would be implemented. So that was February, so March, April, May, come May. I didn't receive an email regarding that, and I thought that we should be getting emails. So I hope that for the very next tax bill, we really can implement what we were told was going to be implemented. About two weeks later, I made a suggestion that we additionally put a piece of information, a slip of paper, in with the tax bills, indicating how people could sign up to get onto the T-Nex website. We have an abysmal number of people who are registered for that. Any increase that we can provide gives more information to more people on a more timely basis, and some of these pieces of information, as we all know, are extremely important. So let's get the message out to get people online, listening, getting messages, getting About eight years ago, I made a suggestion that we utilize these concrete chess tables that we have lying idle in an area of the DPW, not being used, and put them on Chestnut Plaza in between the seats that are there. It's something we have now. It's something I hope that we can use. And I know it was reviewed by the manager, it was reviewed by the person in charge of recreation, and then it seemed to have fallen by the wayside. There's a good use for that area. We can enhance the use of that area. Why not if it's available? Just as I mentioned, tomorrow night, Tuesday night, class of 2015 is graduating from our high school. I hope that our residents, that our council members, as well as the students and their family members and friends will be there. It's a terrific occasion. We know that these people are going somewhere terrific after the education they've gained here. Let's pack them in and get them roaring as they go out. Meters. Well, I have to congratulate the council for, again, considering something that I thought died several times several years ago. You're going to be able to multitask. You'll be able to both be commerce killers while concurrently picking the pockets of residents. Who do you think pays for meters? Out of towners, no. Most people who shop in T-Nex are T-Nex residents. If you want them to pay more money to the township, if you keep thinking it's revenue, tax them more, because that's what you're doing when you put in meters. And you're doing it with a double onus to it. Not only will the township be grabbing their money, but you'll have the middleman who provides those meters also making money on top of that. How much of our money do you want to take out of our pockets by using an additional methodology?
Thank you.
Johnny Sofer, 30 Monterey Avenue. I don't see anybody taking notes as to all these suggestions. I hope somebody is.
The clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Sone. Four quick things. Number one, I had heard on the radio that the state of New Jersey is considering legislation to crack down on these zombie houses, houses that are neither in foreclosure nor occupied, forcing the banks to take possession. I think somebody on our council should follow up on this because a lot of the houses that we're talking about are these zombie houses. That's number one. Number two, I have no idea where this parking garage is going to be on Palisade Avenue. I think we do need a map of what you plan to do. Number three, meters. Englewood may do very well with meters. They are not five minutes from Riverside Square. They're not 10 minutes from the next mall, what used to be Bergen Mall. I think if we put meters in, we're driving our T-Nex residents out of downtown T-Nex and into the malls. I can understand that you want to keep away people parking all day to take the buses in, but do not drive away our shoppers. And finally, last month, somebody brought up that we paid $1,193.39 for a Dell printer, and we were supposed to follow up and see if it had two trays or three trays, which would have justified that cost. And I would like to know why we spent so much money for a printer. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the council?
Marie Warrenkey, I'm speaking as chair of the Hackensack River Greenway Advisory Board. The request we make from council is a very strong recommendation that the newly acquired property at 671 Permandawalk be made in perpetuity as passive open space. I think it's very important, the location of that property by the burial ground, as well as it being in a flood zone, really precludes it from having any other use, but we'd like to see that in writing so that you're sure of it. The other thing the advisory board asked is if the burial ground and that property could be included as the greenways by... As part of the greenway, since our advisory board has its mission to get a greenway all the way through and that all public land be part of the greenway. We'd like your permission to include that in. Thank you.
Dr. Powers, Mickey, and then Deanne, and Naomi, and then I'll go over here.
Dr. Powers, T-Nex. The enslaved African Monument Committee mentioned they were going to be talking to three or four different advisory boards before they came back to you. The problem is, they're going to have a very difficult time figuring out where to go to have those meetings. There are no meetings of any statutory board or any of the other advisory boards listed on the current website for any future meeting at all. You were told last meeting that there was an action by the planning board that needed to occur before you folks looked at the overlay zone. And you were told that that meeting happened on the 25th of May. So I went and looked at the website. What's on the website is that there was a meeting for which there was no information at all on the 12th of May and nothing about the 25th of May. How it is that the public is supposed to know where it is to take their issues of concern as to particularly to statutory boards making important public decisions without there being any information at all on the website about where to do it, period, is unacceptable. Now, I want to come back and raise a question about the overlay zone and what exactly was going on in that last meeting. You folks formed a subcommittee in September 2014. Apparently, that group, because there's all kinds of warehouse clauses, in the three different versions of the overlay zone that you folks have looked at, three different versions, really quite different, in part because the public began to raise questions about them. And the question came up about what was actually the source of the idea of having four stories, and whether or not there was some particular interest being served by that. And every one of the members of the council said they had no idea whatsoever. In fact, Mr. Pruitt said, "I think this ordinance was to allow the possibility. There's no one out there that's entered into the idea of building anything." one out there that's entered into the idea of building anything. There's no developer that's out there waiting for us to pass it so they can go and build this stuff on TNEC Road. Nobody is interested in that property at the moment, except that some members of this council, and the manager and the attorney, have had several meetings with the CEO of Holy Name about the building of a very specific structure that would be allowed by that ordinance. I want to know whether or not Mr. Pruitt was simply left out of the loop, and so some members of the council know what's actually going on, and some don't, or whether that's the case that we didn't actually get the real story. If you are going to have an open meeting and be responsive to it, we need to know precisely what it is that you know about issues as specific as those which emerge from meetings that you're having with the Holy Name.
Thank you. Mickey, and then Naomi Kramer.
Oh, yeah. Mickey, Deanne, and Naomi.
Hi, Mickey Shalan, TNEC. First, I want to thank everybody for the parking lot across on Palisade Avenue that seems to be moving along. PSE&amp;G said they have it done by the end of August. I hope it will be done by the end of August, after all the meetings. The other things I'd like to speak about is Cedar Lane. I have two suggestions that possibly would help bring people to Cedar Lane. One is I was sitting next to the benches, next to Rocklands, and they're sort of, it's only used for people sitting and eating Bischofs Ice Cream there, and I suggest that we put up tables that young people could play checkers and chess, little tables with little benches. I think it would bring young people there, I think it would bring FDU people there, and we could run tournaments. It's right there in the middle of Cedar Lane. I spoke to Mr. Rose about it, and he said we have some concrete tables somewhere that we could possibly use. I also saw on the USS Ling, Ling, whatever the name of it is, that they had a room there with, for entertainment, they had checkerboard tables. And I think it's, people still play it, young people still play checkers and chess, and it's a great thing to bring to the middle of Cedar Lane. The other thing is the diner, Cedar Lane Diner, that is no longer there. I would love to see a health food restaurant there. People are now more and more interested in health food than ever before, and all they have now is Veggie Heaven, and that's very good, but it's Chinese health food. If we can get health food of all kinds in that particular area, again, we have FDU, and we have Orthodox people that would be eating there. So I think those two things would bring more and more people to Cedar Lane. Thank you.
Deanne.
I am not going to get into a debate about the differences between myself as a founding member and a longtime member of the Greenway Advisory Board, and the recommendation of the Greenway Advisory Board to place the historic properties on Palisade Walk on the greenway. I think I've summed up my position in several communications to the council members, and it's summed up very well in the letter that is attached to the recommendation. Probably the most important thing to remember is that the TNEC Historic Preservation Commission has submitted an application to TNEC to have 671 property designated historic, with the intention of folding an historic interpretation of 671 into the historic burial ground. We are not finished with this project. I know the township is still, has the option to work with Meadowland Conservation Trust on protection in perpetuity. A lot of plans for the site yet need to be worked out, and it just adds another layer of complexity to bring in another advisory board that, in their interpretation, their recommendation, has completely overlooked the historic aspect of the property, only calling it open space, and the property is a lot more than just open space. So, you know, as I've said in communications, we have achieved public access, the public can walk the riverfront. We have achieved environmental conservation, and hope to achieve more of environmental conservation. Those are two goals of a Greenway Advisory Board that has been achieved. The most important thing is the history of this land, and a focus on that, okay? Too many cooks can spoil a brew. I have worked on this project since 2003. We would not have acquired the Napper Step property if my effort was not continually ongoing. I am one of the closest neighbors, I'm a resident of the community, you know, this simply cannot be washed over. I'm not here to express any flaws with the Greenway Advisory Board, certainly not in the public arena, but there are parts, you know, the goal is there. You have public access, and you have environmental conservation. What I envision is a historic parkland, and fold it into, become rezoned as one.
Thank you.
Okay? Thank you.
Naomi.
First, I want to comment, I was really very distressed at the interchange between Councilman Castell and the mayor. I think that council people, when they want to speak, should be allowed to speak, and nobody should speak over them. Everybody is equal on this council. Everybody's equal. So that if the council, a council person, wants to speak, that person should be allowed to speak, just as much as the mayor is allowed to speak. It's just not fair. This has happened before where there's over-talking. I think it's not right, and I think the issue, I don't even know any, most of these people, or some of them, I have no thoughts about it, but if the council had not had a chance in a private session, when they were usually supposed to discuss this, to discuss some of these appointments, then they shouldn't, it shouldn't just be announced without the council having a chance to have some discussion about it. It's just not right. It's really not right. It's bully, it's like a bully pulpit type of thing. And I just wanted to comment about, after sitting here, listening to the last meeting, all the people in the neighborhood getting up about the retail over, the retail zone, and the four-story buildings. It was asked, how did that happen? You have a committee, Councilman Castell, Councilman Pruitt, and Councilman Hamadoude were on the committee. I'm assuming that committee set up the wording and what should be included in that ordinance. And the distress is, and it's similar to what Gwynn Akri spoke about, is that when you are making changes in a community, that you include that community, not just a legalese letter, to let them know, to have community meetings, to let them know what your plans are, so that you don't have bringing people here all upset. There's no reason for that. If you, maybe if you had a workshop where you discussed some of these things ahead of time, and the pub people involved were told that it was going to be part of a discussion, that, that would, kind of thing would not happen, and they'd have some input. And the same thing with 1500 TNEC Road. You're going ahead-
Thank you.
-with something that the community has not really had a chance to talk about.
Thank you. Dr. Rashin.
Dr. Alex Rashin, TNEC, thank you. Few things. First of all, it looks like there's inertia, was Mohammed was for six years talking that it'll be hotels, and that'll solve, well, the problem of extra money for the township. Now, it's repeated again, hotels. No consideration that the American dream is gonna open next year, and they'll have all hotels possible, so why hotel at the outskirts of TNEC will attract anybody? So this is not considered, this is not discussed, no numbers, how much money it may be that it'll bring to TNEC. They don't have much spare space, and to spend on something which would bring us peanuts, okay, is not worth. Other thing is again, and comes from previous councils, that let's build housing. Housing is great, okay? However, housing brings congestion, housing brings extra taxes for schools and extra services. Until the numbers, how much all this can bring to the, well, coffins of the, well, to the township, okay, that's irresponsible and incompetent. Without numbers, none of these projects should be even considered. So now, the other thing is about ordinance about the advisory board, technology advisory board, okay? I do not care whether I'll be even on that board, okay? If it'll work with me, fine, I'll give them ideas, let them do it, okay? So I do not pretend to be its chair, okay? Again, let it be, but technology is not communication technology. Technology, according to definition, is science and knowledge applied to solving particular practical problems, okay? And the ordinance 282015 has also communication element, while the sanitary element, drainage, and so on and so forth, this is all technology. So it should be changed from the, well, just communication technologies to technology generally. Second thing is, it should be that the appointees from the council, okay, or administration cannot vote. So the board should bring their suggestions to the council, and council decides whether to support it, amend it, or throw it into the garbage, okay? That's it, but it should not be controlled.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Tom Abbott. Would anyone else like to speak?
Tom Abbott, TNEC. As I was listening to the presentation about the memorial, I was also considering what was happening to our statutory boards. According to the agenda and what happened at the last meeting, basically, all the voting members were going to be white. Two, one woman was going to be replaced on the Board of Advisors, and an African-American man, and an alternate was also going to be replaced. But it's nice to see that that's going to, that that may be changed, depends how the vote goes, because we shouldn't have our statutory boards be all white, or the voting members. As Mr. Schwartz was talking about, the diversity up here, all I could think of was the lack of diversity on those two boards. Nice to see the possible change. It is interesting to note that you have a process for these boards that, as silly as it is, is also being ignored completely. Nominations, according to your code, are supposed to be four people, or four members of the council nominating somebody, not a nomination and a second. There's also supposed to be a notice for the public, vacancies, and while there may have been a notice someplace, there was no mention of it that I know of in the council meetings, there were no emails about it. Who knows where the secret public notice was? Just also briefly, I'd want to go back to your hiring freeze. You have a hiring freeze that says you cannot fill vacant positions without going to the council with a resolution to fill them. And yet today, 10 people seem to get promoted into vacant positions, unless they're new positions. I don't understand why you bother with a hiring freeze that's just totally ignored. Perhaps there's an explanation. A similar thing happened the last time, where there's a progression to replace the tax collector, but he's not mentioned in the resolution. Instead, you're going to replace somebody else and have a series of promotions into vacant positions, which the hiring freeze says you can't fill. If I have time, I'll mention parking meters. We had a big public meeting years ago, not that many, when Mr. Castell was mayor, and virtually the only-
Thank you.
...person in town who was for meters was Mr. Castell. And you're doing it again.
Would anyone else like to address the council? Good and Welfare is now closed. I will start on my left.
We have many major projects in the works, and whether it's the overlay district, or 1500 TNEC Road, or the World of Wings site, we need to get public input, we need to hear what residents have to say before we push the project forward, not after we've thrown it on the board. And this is exactly why we need a diverse planning board, not just because we need to tick off boxes, but we need to have a planning board, a board of adjustment, that is broadly representative of all the characteristics that make our diverse community so wonderful, whether it's where people live, where people are, age, et cetera. And residents should feel that when decisions are sent to the planning board, that it's coming back and it's being considered by a board that is considering the needs of our community, not a board that is, as has been pointed out, is at times remarkably unreflective of that. I think that the issue that Ms. Akri raised about signs is something that is exactly what a code enforcement officer could be. I spoke to her, and I suggested that if she wants to go out and take down signs, that I'd be happy to join her, perhaps I can reach the higher ones and take some of those down. This is a chronic issue that certainly the police, the Health Department are not taking care of. You know, those, the things that a code enforcement officer can handle are situations where residents and other people are not following the rules, and my concern about parking meters is that to a large extent, they punish those people who are doing exactly what we want them to do, come to Cedar Lane and shop. I wish we had a situation like a Ridgewood or an Engelwood, where we needed to do a better job of pushing people away from those parking spots. I want to thank Mr. Lann, I want to thank Deanne Ip, who I guess stepped out, because it is through their efforts, you know, Mr. Lann regarding the parking lot on Palisade Avenue, where we will gain about three to four dozen parking spots for the Rota Center and the Votee Park, and to Deanne Ip, who pushed forward for 671 Palisade Walk. I think to a large extent, what we heard from Marie Warrenkey and what we heard from Deanne Ip are just two sides of the same coin, that we should preserve this land, it should be preserved in perpetuity, it should be connected to the burial ground, and again, that should be a historic site, and I think that there is less difference of opinion there. Now, I think in terms of hotels, absolutely, I would love to see other areas, there might be other areas that we should be looking at, but I think that we are finally in a position where we are moving some of these projects forward. We are going to hear, hopefully, you know, useful information that is reflective of our needs and concerns when we move 1500 TNEC Road to the planning board, but absolutely, when we make changes, when we change the deal, we should be reaching out to residents, we should be getting their input.
Just a few quick things. Mr. Abbott, just to point a reference, Mr. Hodges was not replaced, he actually resigned, he's moving out of town, so I just wanted to clarify that. I thought I heard the replace, and if it's a different person, I apologize, I just wanted to, I just wanted to make it clear to the public that he was retiring, he was retiring and moving on. And I'm sorry, the young- And I'm sorry, the young lady from 30 Monterey, I got the address but I didn't get your email, we were taking those. Hi. It's not a, I thought I heard you ask about a parking garage on Palisades Avenue. Eric, I thought I heard the word garage, I just want to correct that it's the parking area on Palisades Avenue. That's where we're meaning after Mr. Schley. So I heard the garage, I just want to correct you, I heard you wrong, I do apologize. It's simply, it's simply, it was a parking lot. In terms of the printer, we can, we had a report written up about the cost of the printing, specifically $380 of that cost being for next day onsite service for the police department. That was the majority of that overage cost. There was a few other items in there, and if you give me your email address, we can get that report over to you. It was a very good report done, and I thank the manager, I thank the manager for having it drafted so we can investigate that. And that is all. Thank you.
Councilman Pruitt?
I have a couple of things to talk about. First of all, we did a very poor job of communication about Holy Name Hospital. I didn't know. So I spoke out of line in terms of, there was a meeting about that that I wasn't aware of. The second item, Deanne Ip and the Greenway Advisory Committee, you all are not that far apart, you sort of sit down, have a cup of tea, and come up with one statement and not have any confusion about what it is that you want to do. Third thing, the idea of putting a hotel in the Water Street area, American Legion Drive, find us a builder that would like to do it and we'll talk to them, okay? One of the things that we talk about a lot is, why don't we do this, that, and the other thing? But the people with the money that could do it don't show up. So if you have a good idea and you have a sponsor that would like to talk about some development in Tinek and spaces that are appropriate, send them forward. Next item, there is no safe haven left in America. Let me say it again, there is no safe haven left in America. Churches, synagogues, temples, schools, all used to be safe places. Now they have become locations for hate-inspired murderers to find their targets. We are an embarrassment to the world. And I think Mr. Obama mentioned that to some degree yesterday. Other countries that are supposed to be developed like we are, don't kill each other that way. And I think that we first have to identify what the problem is and try to work on it. And I think that there's a lot of work to be done. The incident in Charleston was the most recent, but all kinds of people have been killed in safe havens. And we need to spend some time trying to fix that. North Tinek Road, 1500. The builder and lawyer and subcommittee have met with the Northeast community five times, okay? And there have been some modifications made to their original proposal. One of the modifications was to change the footprint so that there was no exit onto--
Councilman Pruitt, your three minutes are up.
Huh?
Your three minutes--
No, my three minutes ain't up. I gotta finish this one. No exit onto Amsterdam Avenue. Because that was a big concern--
You criticized me for not--
I'm sorry, but I've got to finish this one because this is the one that most people are interested in, okay? There's no exit onto Amsterdam Avenue, that's been removed. They've also reduced the size of the number of people who are going to be, number of units.
Can you represent this during--
And they have proposed a burn to visually prevent the sighting of the building on Amsterdam Avenue. And they're going to put trees there. There are other corrections that can be made, other modifications that can be made. And if they would put a Starbucks in that unit, everybody would fall in line and be in favor of it. I'm in favor of moving it to the planning board to explore what other possibilities there are, because the building that's there now is not something I want to live next to. And I'm sorry, Madam Mayor.
Councilman Stone, would you like a minute rebuttal?
I don't think we disagree on anything. I think if there's anything, it's Councilman Schwartz who has about 90 seconds left of his time.
Castle.
You know, I don't agree with the three-minute rule in any way, shape, or form, but I agree less with how it's enforced. Three minutes here, four minutes there, sometimes the clock is running, sometimes it's not. Yeah, I'm not quite sure the point of having a rule if it's not going to be enforced, regardless of how bad it is. I do want to say I too would like to see diversity on our boards. However, I don't think, I don't agree with the mayor's statement that she made the recommendation because she believed we need diversity on the board. The people that were nominated could very well be the most qualified people. But if we are simply diluting their qualifications by saying we're making the appointment because we want to see diversity on the board, that's kind of tattamount to me saying I voted for our mayor because I wanted to see the first female African-American mayor in Bergen County, not because I thought that she would be the most qualified person for the position. And we talk about the history, you know, the history of progress, and in that one statement, all the qualifications and all the credentials that were not discussed were boiled into a single statement that the recommendations were made because you believed we needed diversity on the board. We can do better than that. We should be doing better than that. We should be having conversations as colleagues. You know, there are a number of conversations that were had with Mike Maron at Holy Name that council members didn't know about. Maybe because you're the mayor and, you know, you think that title weighs heavily in this township when it doesn't, because we're all equal members of this governing body. I would say I'm highly disappointed in the way in which you wield your gavel to silence certain residents when you don't like what they have to say, or certain council members when you don't agree what they have to say. I will say that there aren't many decisions that I regret more than the one that I cast on July 1st for you to be mayor. Actually, I don't think there are any decisions I regret more than that, because I am not, I am not motivated by your leadership. I'm not motivated by the fact that you can go to any number of award ceremonies where you're being honored for being the first of something, but you won't make it to the 150th anniversary of Juneteenth, or the 100-year celebration of the police department, or things that are paramount to the betterment and progress of this town. So I hope you enjoy wielding the gavel and gaveling down residents and picking and choosing and choosing who you're going to call missing or mister. But I am just, I'm thoroughly disgusted. And that's my three minutes.
Deputy Mayor?
All right. First, I'd just like to set the record straight on a few items. First of all, I know, Tom Abbott, you gave me the googly eyes, you thought it was me that brought up the meters, but for the record, I wasn't the one that brought it up this time, but I certainly do still support it, but I wasn't the one that brought it back up. And we'll see. Listen, we need revenue and we need enforcement on Cedar Lane. Our committee is now discussing, reviewing, and we'll see where it goes. Dr. Powers, overlay zone. What I do take 100% responsibility for is the overlay zone. I'm the chairman of the zoning subcommittee. We discussed many different ways to help our residents and their quality of life, our merchants, and as you saw, Councilman Stone and I discussing today, a paver ordinance that came out of the zoning subcommittee. It wasn't perfect because we both got residents that complained to us about it, and we're going to review it. So every single word that's in there is my responsibility, I took full blame, and we heard the residents' feedback, and we're going to now go back to the drawing board. As far as Holy Name Hospital, there is absolutely no nexus to an overlay zone and Holy Name Hospital. The overlay zone came about, and you can go look at the history of when it was first introduced, et cetera, but the overlay zone came about as a result of a merchant or a property owner complaining to a fellow, one of my colleagues, and my colleague brought it to the zoning subcommittee. And that's how we tried to alter the zone, to address that one specific situation. We thought we were doing good, we heard, we're going to try to do better. As far as Holy Name Hospital, they are the largest employer, the largest property owner in town, I don't know neck-to-neck between FDU, but they're up there. Our mayor said that she's going to open up communications to the hospital, to FDU, because there's a lot of resources that they've given us in the past, banners, donations, contributions, things that our taxpayers wouldn't have to pay for. And to have communications is never a bad thing. Now, the fact that this came out at, you know, maybe I should have done a better job communicating it to my council colleagues, but it wasn't something that we were ready for prime time yet, because there was absolutely no decision other than casual conversations between myself, the mayor at one or two meetings, and the manager, and I don't remember if it was any other council members, but it was a casual conversation on how we can work better together. And there was nothing that we wanted to bring out to the open as far as, because there was no decisions made. So I applaud the mayor for taking those steps. I think that's the only way that we're going to be able to save our taxpayers' money by getting other people to maybe look at how they can fund things. We talk about sponsorships, who pays for these things? Our large property owners, our corporate sponsors, our non-taxable entities like Holy Name and FDU, they can possibly help contribute so our taxpayers do not have to pay for it. Thank you.
I agree with Deputy Mayor Katz. And the genesis for us even having this dialogue was with Holy Name Hospital was based upon a discussion that we had at our council retreat in December. And I just wanted to just go back and clarify something regarding the board of adjustment appointments and the changes that I'm making. I am not simply appointing someone simply because they are something. This particular person who was moved up to a regular appointment is an alternate position. She has already served on the board and is qualified. And it is my belief, and I have been consistent in this, that when individuals serve as alternates, when their vacancy becomes available, they should be moved up to regular appointment positions. The fact that the board reflect no diversity of women, or very limited diversity of women, and the fact that there were no minorities, person of color on the board was part of the decision. But I think that it's very important for us to have a diversity of perspective, not just physical diversity, but just diversity of thought. And I do not regret my decision in any way, form, or manner. So with that, I'd like to move the consent agenda--
I just got a couple of items, I just want to--
It's 11 o'clock.
Oh, yes. Can I have a motion to extend the meeting--
Twenty minutes?
Twenty minutes, yeah.
Second.
All right. Just a couple of quick items from Good and Welfare. We had a question about the notifications. Mr. Rose brought that up, an issue of the notifications that he requested. We did put out the notification. Notification reminder for second quarter tax payments was sent out on April 21st at 5:54 to every registered township email user. So that was sent out as per your request. There's a question about dispatch. What the council right now is doing with dispatch is only 911 dispatch. That is the only service that is going to be going to the county. We are not using the full breadth of services that the county offers for dispatch.
When will that happen, though?
Well, we're not going to, we decided not to do that. We decided to do the 911 portion of the county, the other portion consolidating police and fire. You're talking about--
911.
The 911 will occur on July 1st. Contracts, council already approved contracts, we should be flipping the switch on July 1st.
And the second portion, when will that--
The second portion, I'm in the process of developing a timeline for the council. That's a totally different thing. We're approving, we're introducing an ordinance here tonight that will help facilitate it. The dispatch area and the police department's 20 years old, needs to be renovated, so that's a construction project, and that's tied in to the consolidation of dispatch.
But do you, I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, can, one request also is, can you have a timeline for the council, when you're going to have a timeline?
There are certain things, there's certain things that I have to do. I've held two meetings with the police department and the fire department so far about putting a timeline together. We're not at the stage where we can put a timeline together. There's too many things that need to occur before that can be done. We haven't even demoed a CAD, computer aided dispatch, or records management systems vendors product yet. We're just not at the stage where we can say, you know, how long this is going to take or be able to lay out a timeline. We got to hire an architect to design the dispatch area. These things are going to take time. It's a construction project, there's going to be a lot of work involved in getting this done.
Is this years? I mean, that's what I think residents want to know, is it months, weeks, or years?
You want, off the top of my head, what do I think it's going to take--
Yes.
--in dealing? I think it's going to take at least a year. Because you got to, this is what you got to be thinking about, okay? The first thing we have to do is demo a product for CAD, okay? Select a product, and the council's got to award a contract. That's going to take several months to do. We have to hire an architect, okay? That's going to take several months to choose an architect, put it out for RFP, and award a contract. That could take three months. The architect's got to design it. That's going to take another three months. After he designs it, it has to go out to bid. That's going to take another three months. We got to award a contract. It's going to take time to award a contract. Then it's got to be built. So there's a lot involved in consolidating--
So if I may have next year--
No, I, no, I'm not saying May. Off the top of my head, if you want an off-the-top-of-my-head answer--
That's a lot.
September. That's an off-the-top-of-my-head answer. But I'm going to nail down a timeline for you once we get to certain inflection points in the process. The first thing we got to do is look at a product for dispatch, the RMS CAD system. That's a very significant thing to choose for a police department that has had theirs for many, many years. It's going to totally change the department.
To echo Deputy Mayor Katz's questions and concerns, you know, when I look at Resolution O and Ordinance 282015, I see a lot of money being allocated towards these projects when it's not yet clear what we're doing. And I think, to me, it seems premature in that we're allocating these funds when absolutely we should be planning to have somebody come in, perhaps an architect, perhaps a planner, to come up with an overall plan of what we should be doing, have that presented to council, and then, once we have agreement on what we're doing, then we pass the bond ordinance to fund that. And my concern, again, both Resolution O and the corresponding 282015 seem to be premature to me at this point.
Okay, so all we're doing right now, okay, we're not borrowing money or anything. We've previously had a company, I believe it was in, it was in 2004, 2005, design a plan for the dispatch center, the renovation of the dispatch center. The renovation of the dispatch center, somewhere along the line, they decided not to do it. It was tabled, they didn't do it. We need to hire somebody else to design it to today's standard. So the amount that we have in the bond ordinance is based on the potential cost of the previous design. All we're doing right now is putting a funding source in place to start this project, which will start with the architect. So if we want to get this expedited, if we want to get this moving, let's get the sources of funds in place. Before we-- Before we spend money on things like the architect, on anything that involves the dispatch, those things are going to come back before the council to approve an architect, to approve a design, to award a contract for the construction, and we will have, hopefully, all of the money in place to complete the project. We're never going to know until this goes out to bid exactly what it's going to cost.
But William, I, just quickly, we told the residents that we were allocating or funding to hire additional dispatchers because we set the expectation that this consolidation could be done and that this project could be in the works before the end of the year. And now, we're kind of pulling dates out of the sky, but we've already allocated funds for headcount. We have a dispatch center that does not meet the state standard currently. It seems like we're moving backwards because these conversations have been, you know, have been being had for years. And if we know we've got to work with the county, why don't we get a recommendation for them from a CAD? As a candidate, I sat down with the police chief, and he said that he had made several recommendations. We've got neighboring municipalities that are using computer aided dispatch. We have made a series of promises and set some expectations to residents that this is going to be done, and now we're talking about another year and another year, and then $750,000 to appropriate an estimated, for appropriation, estimated cost. We don't even know what the estimated cost is because there's no accompanying document that says this is what we expected to cost. In the same way that we talked about cable and wiring for the old police building, and, you know, I requested that we actually get the estimated cost for that, there's no way that in good faith I can trust that $750,000 in estimated cost is what we need for something that we don't expect to do for maybe years. Like, when can we get it done? I still don't even know the last day of the CFO. Like, I, we need dates. We got to hire a new CFO. We don't know when her last day is. There's no actual timeline for this project yet. We earmarked headcount.
And let me explain the earmarking of headcount. We earmarked headcount so that we could turn over the dispatching of 911 to the county. That is occurring on July 1st. We are in the process of hiring those three dispatchers. They are not hired yet.
Wait, we earmarked headcount so we could turn over 911 to the county. If we turn over a service to the county, that means that we should be saving on headcount. Like, it's fewer services that we're delivering, and all of our dispatches do 911 and police.
Can I interject here and recommend that you provide council with a written timeline as to what the timeline is for this stuff requested? We've extended the meeting to 11:20. We have to introduce the ordinance.
I cannot, there's, I can't give you a timeline right away. I've met with the police department on this. This has to be driven by the police department. They don't feel we can do a timeline yet. I've met with the people who are going to be users of this. There's certain steps we have to go through. I understand the council wants it done. I'm trying to get it done. The first thing we need to do is put a funding source in place, okay? If the council delays that, then we could forget about the architect. We need an architect to design it.
But there must be some steps that we have to go through, and those can be written down. And then we'll move on from there.
The first step is putting sources of funds.
We don't need it this evening, given the lateness of the hour. So I'd like to move the consent agenda to include the minutes, Resolutions B through Q, pulling, pulling Resolution F, G, and H, and omitting all those that have been tabled, and the bill list and the amount of...
Four million, one hundred thirty-eight thousand, five hundred forty-six dollars and twenty-five cents.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Councilman Castle?
Just a quick question. Mayor, did you want to pull Resolution O as that refers to ordinance, $3 million?
I would second that because I was going to make the motion to pull Resolution O.
That's the accompanying resolution to 282015. And also the bill list?
Okay, so I have a motion for approval of minutes with the exception of June 9th, the closed session which we pulled before, and Resolutions B through Q with the exception of F, G, H, O, and the bill list.
Are we pulling the bill list or items on the bill list?
There are definitely items on the bill list, but it just seemed quicker and more expeditious to pull the entire bill list.
Roll call.
Councilman Castle?
Yes, with, yes.
Okay, Deputy Mayor Katz?
No, in a minute, I'm sorry. There's no bill list. You said, is that just sort of...
Bill is just pulled.
Okay, yes.
Okay, Councilmember Pruitt?
Yes.
Councilmember Schwartz?
Yes.
Councilmember Stone?
Yes.
No on Resolution LM and O.
I'm sorry.
LM and N. I'd like to move Resolutions F. Can I move them all together?
You could, but it's not going to be a confusing vote.
Okay, F, G, and H.
Second.
To reflect the amendments that were previously stated.
So you...
Do you need me to clarify that?
You're voting to amend F, G, and H.
Mr. Attorney, just as a point of order, I think we discussed that we were going to make those amendments. We haven't made those amendments yet, so we haven't pulled to make those amendments.
That's what I'm doing now.
We're not introducing it. Okay, just thank you for the clarification.
So Resolution F would be to appoint Monica Hornis to the four-year term. Resolution H would be to appoint Mark Mermelstein to alternate number one, no, alternate number, um, alternate number three. And Resolution G to appoint alternate number two.
So, Resolution F originally was for an appointment for Monica Hornis for a four-year, I'm sorry, for Mark Mermelstein, which was changed to Monica Hornis, for a four-year term to the Board of Adjustment. That was Resolution H. Resolution G was originally for Zeb Green, for a Board of Adjustment member to fill the unexpired four-year term of Warren Hodges, that's been changed to Agri Fresh. Resolution H is appointing, I have alternate number one Board of Adjustment member, Mark Mermelstein, and alternate number three member, Zeb Green, to the Board of Adjustment. They're both two-year terms, commencing July 1st and ending June 30th, 2017. And then...
But we made a nomination to move up our T.
And then a T for Amon was nominated tonight, so...
To move up to one.
To crack the order that on July 4th.
Yes.
Okay. And then that leaves us with one.
One alternate, yes.
Okay, so that was an motion to amend.
Just for clarification on process, these are going to have to be re-listened at the next meeting, correct?
No. These are motions, every one of these persons were nominated at the last meeting for what the amendment is to change...
The order of...
This vote appoints them. Yeah, which one through next meeting?
But he was nominated tonight for the next meeting. Yes. Can I have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Castle? On F, G, and H.
I'm not in favor of reappointing anyone to these statutory boards. The board in and of itself has a quorum, and given that this is my first time hearing about the changes in these, the positions that these individuals are being appointed to, I can't just blindly vote to give someone an appointment to a statutory board without actually having some meaningful conversation as to why these changes were made. So no.
Deputy Mayor Katz?
Yes.
Councilmember Pruitt?
Yes.
Councilmember Stone?
These are not unreasonable changes. I think they make a tiny, tiny step forward. I am concerned about the way this is done, but again, I will vote yes at this point.
Mayor?
Yes.
Okay. Miss, can I, Madam Mayor, can I just ask a question? Since these appointments, the next appointments are not till July 1st, are we allowed to nominate someone for a position that we know is going to be vacated by July 1st?
No. The position has to be vacant.
Um, can someone move Resolution O?
I'll move Resolution O for the purpose of discussion. Second. Resolution O refers to the ordinance that's being proposed in which we're asked to allocate nearly $3 million for projects, clearly projects where we don't have an established timeline, as in computer aided dispatch. Schedule B is supplemental funds for a project that was initially proposed in 2011, and additionally, technology equipment that is going to be above the $36,000 cap that was in the Technology Advisory Board resolution. So I don't think that we should be allocating $3 million for projects that we don't have clarity on, especially knowing that there's no expectation of cost that can substantiate And additionally, I know the manager said that we need to assign an architect, but I'd actually like to see the process of an RFP go out for an architect and have those proposals sent back before we start allocating funding for it.
Madam Mayor, just to echo Councilman Castle's remarks, you know, in looking at Item A and this appropriation for a dispatch center for $750,000 that we don't have any design for, and Item E within their appropriation of $550,000 for information technology, computer aided dispatch, records management system, where we haven't looked at anything, let alone selected anything, and I think we're doing this backwards. I do understand that this is not appropriating anything, but I think that we should see that we map out what it is we want, how we're selecting this, what our options are, what the numbers are, what the numbers might be, how long it would last. Once we've seen those details, then we should be appropriating those funds, then we should be, you know, putting forward a bond ordinance rather than coming up with the amount first and then figuring out what we're going to buy once we have that. I think we're doing this backwards.
Yes, I'm also a little concerned. I just, it doesn't seem like we have, it seems like we're putting the cart before the horse. I mean, it doesn't seem like we have too many of the details. You know, we know, I think, everything, out of the five W's, we only know the why we want to do this. I don't think we know the who, the what, the where, the when. So I am concerned about this. So I also can't support him.
Don't forget the H.
You know, we spent a lot of time talking about timelines and things not being done, and now we are making an effort to slow it down even more. We're not appropriating any money.
But we don't even know when this can be implemented.
We're just appropriating a possibility. We're not giving out a contract. We need to go forward with this.
Can I have a roll call?
Councilmember Castle?
No.
Deputy Mayor Katz?
No.
Councilmember Pruitt?
Yes.
Councilmember Schwartz? Councilmember Stone?
I don't vote, I don't vote.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm abstaining, absence of information I'm looking for.
No.
Mayor?
No.
Can I just say something? So this is in essence what we've done. So by not authorizing any of these, by not introducing these bond proposals, these bond issues, what we've done is, the, our entire capital plan, we've decided not to fund the capital plan, everything that we've talked about in our budget discussions. $30,000 capital improvement fund purchase for equipment for the fire department, we decided no on that. We discussed it already. That's in there. That's in the bond issue. $30,000, we said no on that. The $30,000 for the replacement of the...
Mr. Manager, we have to extend the meeting. Can I have a motion to extend the meeting, 10 minutes?
Second.
All right.
Aye.
And I want to change my vote to yes.
$30,000 for replacing the guardrails along State Street Bridge approach on Windsor Road, we've said no to that, okay? Those need to be replaced. The 750 for the dispatch, by having no funding source in place, there's nothing that we can do. We need a funding source in place so that we could start the process of getting things moving. Glen Point Sanitary Sewer Pump Station, we have crew engineering working on that. We need this bond issue to get those pumps at Glen Point Pump Station replaced. Storm drainage, Van Arsdale Place, we have water running down Van Arsdale Place, running into the backyards of residents, into their pool. That needs to be fixed. We've said no to that. Road resurfacing, the $1 million for road resurfacing to do the 24 roads, we've said no to that. The acquisition of...
Mr. Manager, I'd like to call another roll call.
Before we do, so we don't have just another exercise, can we amend the ordinance?
I'd like to make a motion to reconsider.
A second, on the motion. Mr. Manager, all these different projects that you mentioned seem like they're very credible projects and the right thing to do. The issue that I had is that you intertwined it with a project that I'm concerned about. So if it was done separately, or if these were, if this was extricated from this project, I would feel a little more comfortable.
Okay, let me just tell you why it's that way. It is that way to save money. We're saving money by combining these bond ordinance into single general purpose bond issues. We pay for each one of these to be put together. By combining them, we save money. This is not spending of money. We're not spending money. All we're saying is that these are the projects we're proposing to do, we're authorizing that nothing's being spent. It's going to come back before the council to spend the money. The council's going to decide if we spend the money. We have to get these in place.
Isn't the bond ordinance to authorize, I mean, isn't that spending money?
No. It's an authorization. It is not actual spending of money. We're not actually spending it.
If we're not spending the money, then why can't we simply, why can't we simply amend the ordinance, since we're not spending any money, to remove the thing that has absolutely no timeline, which is computer aided dispatch? And all the things that you so eloquently articulated are need-to-do items? Let's do those. Let's appropriate that. Can we do that? Can we remove A and S?
We have a bond, we have a bond council that prepares. You know, we just can't pull these out. We have an attorney that prepares these bond ordinances for us.
What happens if we don't support A, but we support B, C, and B and F?
You can't do it. It's one bond ordinance. You can't pull those out. What's going to happen is when we decide to go and actually do those things, we're going to spend more money to have that bond ordinance prepared. Could I, can I talk? I think, I think we misunderstood something here. This is giving us the opportunity to get the bond passed. Now, we have to vote on each separate thing once we decide to do it. If we don't like the idea of the dispatches, then when it comes time to vote...
If we don't like the idea of the dispatches, then when it comes time to vote on them, we should not vote on them, which makes no sense to me. But the other things that were listed there, it just doesn't make any sense at all to postpone that. What are we trying to do here?
If you introduce it as is, there still has to be a hearing on it, between now and then, we could speak to bond council to see if it can be amended the way you're talking.
Talk into the mic. I can't hear you.
I said if you introduce it tonight, you still have to set a hearing for the bond ordinance, and between now and the date of the hearing, we could check with bond council if it's appropriate to amend it the way you want to amend it.
Same, just so I'm clear though, because based on the logic that Councilwoman Pruitt just laid out, I mean, we could bond a million dollars for, you know, forty-three-hundred square foot bathroom in Voughty Park. We clearly are not in favor of that, but by that logic, we should just put together a bond ordinance so that we can spend the money or vote on the-- like, no. This is-- there is no plan for computer-aided dispatch, there is no plan.
There is a plan, there's a plan for computer--
What's the timeline? What's the timeline? What's the council to wear?
Councilwoman Castle, there's no timing island, we know approximately-- we have an approximate cost.
From where? Where did that come from? Where did that approximate cost come from?
There's a motion on the floor to reconsider the vote, there's a first and second, can I have a roll call?
Well, can I just-- because I may change my vote depending upon what the manager's response is, if I can-- and I'm the-- it seems like I'll be the fifth vote, which is what you need here.
You only need four at the end.
You only need four for introduction? Well, you-- okay. The question is, you know, obviously, some of us are concerned about a timeline, right? We expressed it before we even-- this came up. Between now and the time the bond is passed, can we get a timeline? In order for us to support this-- in order for me to support this bond?
Between now and the time, I will do every single thing in my power to get us a timeline.
I will support the introduction, but I'm not going to support the bond, and I will lose all these wonderful things if I'm number five, or if I'm-- if we don't have a timeline. Is that fair? I mean, is that reasonable?
I'm going to do everything I can to put together a timeline.
Can I just ask why we're asking for a timeline and not giving direction to give a timeline?
Because he's got a lot of different priorities, and this is now obviously one of our priorities.
Can I have a roll call?
So, he's gonna-- he wants a bond--
Can I have a roll call?
Councilwoman Castle?
Yes.
I have a motion, I have a second to reconsider. Uh, Councilwoman Castle?
No.
Deputy Mayor Cast?
Uh, yes.
Councilwoman Pruitt?
Yes.
Councilwoman Schwartz? Councilwoman Stone?
No.
Mayor?
Yes, a motion to move the resolution. Oh. I made the motion, I need a second.
I'll second. Just in terms of rather quick discussion, I am fairly confident that this is not the last bond ordinance we'll pass in Teneck history, that there will be another bond ordinance, that we will get the details for the other items A and E, we will be able to put those into a bond ordinance and pass B, C, and D, and whatever other worthy items we've already discussed, already approved, and already want to do at some point in the future.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Castle?
No.
Deputy Mayor Cast?
Yes.
Councilwoman Pruitt?
Yes.
Councilwoman Schwartz? Councilwoman Stone?
No.
Mayor?
Yes.
Can I make a motion that we give the manager direction to come back with a timeline by the next meeting? I'd like to-- I make a motion that we give the manager direction to come back to the next regularly-scheduled meeting with a timeline for implementing computer-aided dispatch.
You want to talk a little bit more about what it takes to get a timeline?
I know that this conversation's been happening for several years--
We need to introduce the ordinances--
I made a motion.
I'd like to-- waiting for a second.
Second.
Councilwoman Castle?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Cast?
No, I mean, I'm not going to support the bond if I don't have a timeline, so--
Did you say yes? I think that's yes.
What'd you vote?
He said no.
No. No, I'm not-- I mean, I'm not directing him, he's--
No, can we have a next vote?
Councilwoman Pruitt? Councilwoman Schwartz?
That's a trick question, I think it was to sit down, I think you wanted to sit down, I think the compelling is not the proper forum, I'm going to abstain.
Councilwoman Stone?
Yes.
Mayor?
No. I'd like to introduce ordinance number twenty-six, two thousand fifteen, twenty-seven, two thousand fifteen, and twenty-eight, two thousand fifteen.
Just for clarification, that passes, right?
No. Two no's.
There's three S's. And abstention goes with them.
Three S's, three S's. Three no's and abstention. I have a motion to introduce--
I need a second on--
Second.
Okay. Ordinance number twenty-six dash two thousand fifteen, and ordinance appropriating thirty thousand dollars from the capital improvement fund of the township of Teneck for the purchase of fire equipment. Ordinance number twenty-seven dash two thousand fifteen, and ordinance appropriating thirty thousand dollars from the capital improvement fund of the township of Teneck for the replacement of Windsor Road and State Street Bridge guardrails. Ordinance number twenty-eight dash two thousand fifteen, bond ordinance to authorize the making of various public improvements and the acquisition of new information technology and telecommunications equipment, and new communication and signal systems equipment in, by, and for the township of Teneck and the county of Bergen, state of New Jersey, to appropriate the sum of two million, nine hundred twenty-five thousand dollars to pay the costs thereof to appropriate a federal grant, to make a down payment to authorize the issuance of bonds, to finance such appropriation, and to provide for the issuance of bond anticipation notes and anticipation of the issuance of such bonds. Roll call, Councilwoman Castle?
I have a question on the motion to the manager. On the Windsor Road and State Street--
Right.
I've seen a damage, a significant damage. Is that from car accidents? Windsor Road and State Street, the guardrail? The State Street guardrails are a disaster. The guardrail is deteriorated, it almost isn't there anymore. It's not from an accident-- No. It's from deterioration. Thank you.
Councilwoman Castle?
Just a question, I'm sorry, on the ordinance. So, when would this bond ordinance come back for passage?
July fourteenth.
Okay, so that-- so that for me is my timeline. Okay, okay.
Councilwoman Castle?
Uh, yes, on introduction to twenty-six, two thousand fifteen, twenty-seven, two thousand fifteen, no on twenty-eight, two thousand fifteen.
Deputy Mayor Cast?
Yes, to all three.
Councilwoman Pruitt?
Yes.
Councilwoman Schwartz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Stone?
Yes, on twenty-six and twenty-seven, no on twenty-eight.
Mayor?
I just-- I know, the meeting's over, I just--
Didn't I pull the bill list? Because I thought I--
Yeah, I just want to say before we close, I want to just thank Ron Goodman, who's faithful and here with us every Tuesday for taping our council meetings, and I also wanted to wish all those in the community to celebrate Ramadan, the happy Ramadan. Muhammad is not here with us this evening because of-- he's celebrating his holiday, so I just wanted to acknowledge him and say goodnight. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
I can't let you do that, I-- the list was called.
Oh. So, we need to continue the meeting for five minutes.
Motion.
Second.
Councilwoman Castle?
Uh, yes.
Deputy Mayor Cast?
Yes.
Councilwoman Pruitt? Councilwoman Schwartz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Stone?
Yes.
Mayor? On the bill list?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Okay, bill list.
Oh, this is the bill list? I thought that was just the extension.
No, that was-- that was the extension, now we can discuss the bill list.
Okay, there you go.
All right, we're clear, that was just the extension.
That's an unnecessary roll call, but that's okay.
There are a number of things on the bill list that--
Your motion is second floor.
We did it already, yes.
There are a number of things on the bill list that I think are serious draw for concern. The first thing that stepped out to me was, we're paying dues for the CFO. We're paying dues for a CFO who's already said that she's leaving the municipality, so why are we paying dues for the next year?
Those dues are for this year, and they will translate to any CFO, whoever the CFO is.
Do we have a date? What is the date that the CFO will no longer be--
You know, I will discuss this as a personnel issue with council. Right now, the date is August seventh, and we've advertised for CFOs. We need a person who has a CMFO certificate for New Jersey. There are very, very few people that actually have that and have the experience. We've advertised in the record, we've advertised in New Jersey League of Municipalities, we've done a lot of advertising for it, and not many people come forward with the experience and the certificate to do the job. If we're unable to fill the position, we'll have to hire a company like we did in the past at significant expense to the township. So, the CFO who's leaving, who decided to make some changes in her own life, is doing right by the township to make sure that she doesn't just leave us in the lurch, and is being here and delaying her own personal timelines to make sure she doesn't just leave us without a CFO, that could cost us significantly.
And the other-- the other issues that were cause for concern in the bill list were-- I know that we started discussions around, what was it, the vehicle allowances, and it seems there are a number of department heads who are listed having vehicle allowances, but they're not all created equal when it comes to those vehicle allowances, some are getting two fifty, some are getting one seventy-five. I see a CFO still has a vehicle allowance on the bill list. Can we-- why does the CFO get it?
I think that that's an item we should have a discussion of in closed session because of the people that it involves. I think the council should discuss that in the close-- as a closed session item.
And then the other aspect was, and I don't have clarity on this, what are the-- what are the nursing services from Holy Name Medical Center that are twenty thousand dollars a month?
We have a nursing services contract with them, I think the contract's about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. They provide, you know, different services for our seniors at the recreation center. It's a nursing service, they provide nurses, check their blood pressure, and that type of service.
Okay. And we-- but we know we're actually utilizing that service.
Absolutely, that's very well utilized.
Besides just the vehicle allowances that-- you know, all department heads are getting different allowances, and why we're still paying certain things to the CFO--
I didn't invite, passed the bill list.
Those are the things that I was most concerned about. And the dues that we're paying to the-- to a certain statutory board's attorney, I think we already had clarity that we have to pay those bills, even though-- yes. Okay. That's it.
Okay, motion to approve?
We didn't pass it.
Didn't pass it yet.
Roll call.
Roll call for the bill.
Roll call on the bill list.
I don't have a motion to approve at all.
Motion.
I have a motion to extend the meeting, I need a motion to approve the bill.
We are ready. I'll make the motion.
Okay. I just need a second.
Second.
Councilwoman Castle?
Uh, no on the vehicle dues, and yes on everything else.
Deputy Mayor Cast?
Abstain on the bill list.
Councilwoman Schwartz?
Yes.
Pruitt, I'm sorry. Councilwoman Schwartz?
Vehicle allowances, excuse me.
Yes.
Mayor?
Motion to adjourn? Thank you. Good night.